Called order, a regular meeting of Warren City Council Tuesday, May 23 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
President Green.
Here.
Vice President Watts.
Here.
Secretary Moore, absent. Assistant Secretary LaFerty, here. Councilmember Kaczynski.
Present.
Councilmember Papandrea.
Present.
Councilmember Rogency.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Is there a motion to?
Excuse the.
Thank you.
Yes. So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No. You want a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerty.
Yes.
Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski, yes.
Ms. Rogency.
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea.
No.
Green votes yes. Five to one. Next item.
Item number four, adoption of the consent agenda. So moved. With discussion.
Support. Motion by LaFerty, support by Watts. Discussion, Mr. LaFerty.
We are adding item 4F, which is an approval of the settlement in Ray, Section 8E of Public Act 267, 1976, in the matter of Perry Teolis versus City of Warren, United States District Court, Eastern Division of Michigan case number 22-CB-12269, Honorable Paul D. Boardman.
Any others? Call the question, Mr. LaFerty.
Yes.
Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea.
Yes.
Ms. Rogency.
Yes.
Green votes yes. Item passed, six to zero. Next item.
Item number five, adoption of the agenda. So moved, with discussion.
Support. Motion by LaFerty, support by Watts. Discussion, Mr. LaFerty.
Thank you. We have, all council members should have received, for item 12C, proposed extension agreement between the City of Warren and UAW Local 412, Unit 59. That will be item 12C. Item 13C will be an update from legal counsel. Are there any other items?
Don't believe so. That's a backup. Any others? Call the question, Mr. LaFerty.
Yes.
Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Ms. Rogency.
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea.
Yes.
Green votes yes. Item passed, six to zero. Next item.
Item 5A, resolution in recognition of Dylan Reeves.
Mr. LaFerty. Can I get a motion support first, please?
So moved.
Support, LaFerty.
The Reeves family can come up to the podium.
I think everybody recognizes you, Dylan. On behalf of the City Council, we have a resolution to recognize your heroism. Whereas Dylan Reeves lives here in the City of Warren, along with his parents, Steve and Irida Reeves, and his sister, Ray Lynn. And whereas Dylan is a 7th grade honor roll student and participates in the middle school band as a percussionist. And whereas Dylan likes other, like others, his age typically enjoys playing hockey, fishing, swimming, and spending time with his family, friends, and little sister. And whereas Dylan, on April 26, 2023, while traveling home on a school bus near Masonic and Bonard, recognized the school bus driver was in distress and immediately took action. And whereas Dylan managed to steer clear of other vehicles, bringing the school bus to a stop while instructing his fellow classmates to call 911 without accident or injury. And whereas Dylan was not able to, not only able to stop the bus and prevent harm to his fellow classmates, but his actions ensured the bus driver would receive needed medical attention in a timely manner. And whereas Dylan has now been recognized on a national level for his heroic efforts on that day. And whereas Dylan deserves recognition for his calm and quick reaction, and we would like to express our gratitude on behalf of the City of Warren. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Warren thanks Dylan Reeves for his life-saving actions on April 26, 2023, and wishes him every success in his future endeavors. This resolution declared adopted this 23rd day of May, 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, Dylan Reeves.
Stay close, we're not done with you. Wanted to make mention that his mother, Irida, posted a social media post on Facebook that was shared three, four, 5,000 times. And I also shared it, and I wanted to make mention of the fact that after sharing it, I became your publicist for a brief couple of days here. Receiving calls from CNN News, CNN This Morning, Good Morning America, The British Broadcasting Corporation, Good Morning Britain. I'll send you my bill later.
Oh, sure.
The responses received from Kentucky, California, Indiana, Washington, North Carolina, Minnesota, New Jersey, Ohio, all expressing their gratitude for our hero. Not only international response from Canada, Scotland, Finland, the United Kingdom, Belgium, Philippines, Italy, Denmark, France, Spain, the Netherlands, Germany, Sweden, Mexico, and Africa. You have been recognized worldwide. On behalf of the City of Warren, here's your official resolution. And a gift card on behalf of the City of Warren. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. President, would you join us, please?
I'll just take the picture.
Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you.
Appreciate you very, very much.
All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we adjourn now?
Yes.
Next item.
Item number six, the calendar of pending matters. Motion to receive and file.
Support. Motion by LaFerty, support by Watts. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next item.
Item 6B, discussion in Ray, resident and neighborhood concerns.
I have one.
Mr. Kaczynski.
First item is 3185 Loraine. I understand this is privately owned property. It's a condo community, but it was brought to my attention by the complainant that evidently the condo committee board is taking in the money for the sidewalk assessment, but they are not doing the repairs. The resident has been there since July of 1970, when the first assessments for sidewalk evidently were $33 back in 1970, and now it's all the way up to $271. The complainant has paid, time over time, the sidewalk assessment, broke her arm, and is wondering why the city has not been able to force the condo committee, community to repair the sidewalks. My understanding is that as a courtesy call, the engineering department went out there and marked it so they would know what sidewalks need to be repaired. Property maintenance went out there and issued them citations. Evidently, they prevailed in court and didn't have to pay for it. But it's just the whole idea that the board is taking in the money and for the assessments and not getting the sidewalks done. So I don't know what can be done about this at this point here. I know it's a contract between the resident and the private condo community, but there's something absolutely disgusting about taking advantage of an 86-year-old senior citizen that's paid into the system and not getting her sidewalk repaired after she paid the assessment to the condo board. So that's item number one. Item number two is evidently 29817 Newport. According to the property maintenance code, you're allowed one recreational vehicle. So there is a recreational vehicle there. It is properly there, and it's not disturbing anything. I guess property maintenance went out there, looked to see if it was a rodent harbinger situation. It is not. There is no evidence that there is any problem with rodents or anything like that. And evidently, this person is having all kinds of problems with their recreational vehicle being there legally parked in the driveway by the garage. So I don't know if there's anything further can be done about that. Maybe there needs to be something a little bit more clear in the ordinance that says about what recreational vehicles are allowed and what recreational vehicles are not allowed so that this confusion is no longer there. But I went out there today, I looked at it, it looks to be a perfectly clean yard, and they are in compliance with the city ordinance in having the one recreational vehicle there. So I don't know if there's anything that the council needs to do in order to maybe be more specific about the ordinance concerning recreational vehicles, but I'm not seeing an issue.
On your first item, Mr. Kaczynski, that's the condo associations are private property, and they always own that. There's not much jurisdiction we have on that. And that's commonly seen when someone's paying their maintenance fees to an association, and while that's terrible for the person that you brought up who's been paying it all this time, but what happens is sometimes other people aren't paying it, so the fund doesn't have enough to do the sidewalks. So that's where they need to be, always going to their meetings and making sure that there's enough money in there. On the second one, there is an ordinance for zoning on recreational vehicles and the placement of parking them, I believe, on a pad behind the envelope of the house. Or if you have an RV and you're going to take it out, it can be in front of your house for a limited timeframe over a weekend, per se, while you get it ready to take. But if it's on, sitting in the driveway, that's not part of the code.
No, this is on a, evidently it's on a gravel area that's behind the garage.
Yeah, that should be adequate.
It's just, it's like a small fishing boat.
Yeah.
Something that you just go on a week and try to.
I'll take a look.
Try your luck at getting some fish, I guess. If you can get them.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Watts.
I got a couple items. This one just came in this afternoon, and I was going to send it over, but I see PD's here, but I got a complaint, and I don't know if anything can be done, but 7,000, 7031 Fisher Street, the residents are complaining that people at that address are playing basketball into the middle of the night. I don't know what times are involved, but if PD could take a peek at that and their patrols, that'd be great. And the other call that just continues to come in constantly is Wexford Street, south of 14 Mile. There's numerous blight violations in that neighborhood, and the gentleman, he watches the blight people come down, they never get out of their car, they look around, they keep going. I've been through there a few times, it's been a few weeks since I've been through there, and there's quite a few problems over there, and I don't know what they're doing, but, you know, I suspect that, you know, blight's not doing things because we're turning it in. But if they could take a look at it, and, you know, the resident, guy's been a resident for 60 years, you know, he's got a legitimate complaint, he deserves to have somebody stop and knock on a door and take care of the problem, so appreciate that.
Yep.
Mr. President. Two items. One constituent resident neighbor complained about the median between Mound and Van Dyke, which is quite horrible. There's grass growing up through the concrete. They've been complaining about it for a couple of years. I didn't notice it until they pointed it out, but it does look really, it's across from GM. I don't know who owns the median, if that's us or the county.
County.
So if someone, if misscaptious or someone from engineering could contact the county about that, just isn't very welcoming. And then across the street from 52541 Frazo, there is a tree that's being held up with rope to the power line, and I have a photo that I'll send to the administration, but I would say it's likely a fire waiting to happen.
Right.
And or a power issue waiting to happen. So if someone could take a look at both of those, one being more important as far as the power line, that would be great.
What was that address?
52541, across the street from 52541 Frazo.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I had one more.
Go ahead.
I know it's Wayne County. I actually talked to Mr. Scott today about this here, but I heard from a lot of the businesses, it's not resident, but it's businesses, that 8 Mile, the median there, the grass is just ridiculous. I mean, Wayne County has not been out there at all to cut the grass in the median, and it's about three feet, three and a half feet tall. It's just absolutely ridiculous. He sent out crews to go around our display where we have for City of Warren on the median to go and clean up that area. But the rest of 8 Mile, I mean, if the county's not going to do it, maybe we can do the same thing we did with Macomb County. Bill Wayne County for going out there and doing it.
I don't know whether they have a, Mr. Rogency, you had a, posted some on social media about no-mow May.
Yes.
And I wonder if Wayne County or the City of Detroit, are you aware of anything that they've adopted?
No, it's just Ferndale that I'm aware of. They allow residents to not mow for the month of May to support natural.
Yeah.
Bees and other plants.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. Got a couple. These are all blight, and we are in the month of May, and people let the grass get a little taller, fill in spots, whatnot, but we're getting to the end of May and coming into June, and here's some addresses. I received a lot of calls and a lot of messages. 14333 Weir, W-E-I-E-R, abandoned house with the grass as a foot tall, and debris in the front yard of basketball, portable basketball pole in the front yard turned over. 4808 Kingsley, 28177 Ryan, 7503 Ready, 4530 Frazo. All blight, overgrown, debris in the yards, gutters falling off. Hopefully, property maintenance can address this directly. I know on one of them, blight was going out, but I didn't see anything on our system that shows that they did. So if they can go to those, I'd appreciate it. Any additional? Next item.
Oh, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rogency?
I had one more. Oh, the cemetery. I know that someone spoke to Mr. Councilmember LaFerty about this, but the Memorial Cemetery is apparently in disrepair, and I think the Village Historic Society is supposed to be overseeing that. I don't know if someone in the administration could look into that, but I was on an email about this specifically.
Our, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. LaFerty.
Mr. President. Through the chair, are you referring to the Union Cemetery on Chicago or the Memorial Gardens Cemetery on 13 and Ryan?
Not 100% certain.
Okay.
Just what the residents from the Historic Commission are communicating.
Probably, if you're historical, it's probably the Union Cemetery. I do know about downed tree limbs that were reported to be taken care of, and that hasn't taken care of, been taken care of yet. We'll add, once again, to this item, asking to have the tree limbs that have fallen in the Union Cemetery to be removed.
Thank you.
Motion to send to the administration.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries next item.
Next item is item number seven, approval of the minutes. Item 7A, regular meeting minutes, May 9, 2023. So moved.
Motion by LaFerty, support by Watts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries next item.
Next item is item number seven, approval of the minutes. Item 7A, regular meeting minutes, May 9, 2023. So moved.
Motion by LaFerty, support by Watts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries next item.
Item 8, approval of the bills. 8A, general revenue funds. We have 8A1, table check, number 652899 to Macomb Community College.
Is there a motion to remove from the table?
Motion to remove from the table for discussion, please.
Watts, Rogency.
Support.
Motion by Watts, support by Rogency to remove from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Off the table. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with discussion.
Support.
Motion by Watts, support by Rogency. Discussion, Mr. Watts.
Yes, with permission, I'd like to call Commissioner McAdams to the microphone, please. So what we know is that there was two young men sent to the academy, and there's nothing in the budget for, sorry, one person sent to the academy. There was no money in the budget for the cadet program from the last budget, and I'm not opposed to the cadet program, I'm opposed to how it's being done. So Commissioner, here's the question. First question. We sent one person to the academy, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And why did we send that person, why did we pick somebody to send to the academy when we had fully credentialed firefighters on the list that could have been hired?
Because I'm budgeted for 27 cadets to be in the program, and we solicited applications, and we had five people to apply to fill those 27 cadet positions minus, minus the six that we currently have. So I had 21 vacancies, which were budgeted for.
So did we, did you, the city, send this person to the academy without a CPAT test? They passed the CPAT test before he went to the academy?
You take the CPAT after.
Afterwards?
After the Fire Academy.
Okay. Did, did we do background checks on these people beforehand?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And he is a, already a paramedic, so once he completes, completed the Fire Academy, he is eligible for hire as a fully certified firefighter paramedic.
Is he a licensed paramedic in Michigan?
No, he is a licensed paramedic. He's in the process of transferring his National Registry license from Florida to Michigan.
Okay.
He relocated from Florida to Michigan because his wife is gone, going to grad school.
Okay. So, I mean, I know Ms. Moore had some questions, and I don't, I don't have her questions. What I do know is we need to pay the college. I mean, we incurred the debt, and we can battle out the issues, you know, afterwards, so that's all I have.
Any further? Good?
Yeah.
Call the question on check number 652899. Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Ms. Rogency.
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea.
Yes.
Mr. LaFerty.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Green votes yes. Item passed, six to zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. LaFerty.
Yes, item 8A, general revenue funds.
One second.
Okay.
There was a check, there's another check that we have tabled for postage that Treasurer Barnwell had emailed me about, and the tabled check was regarding postage that Communications had used, but the postage meter account comes out of the Treasurer's office. So they're short $9,000 right now in postage, and they need to send out tax bills soon. So while it's a budgeted item, and everything on it, the accounting from the budget standpoint works, they're still short $9,000. So I'd like to, would someone take that off the table so we can make their account whole?
Motion to suspend the rules.
I'll support it, I guess.
And then we'll amend the agenda to add the item.
Well, you can amend the agenda anytime.
All right. I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my motion to suspend the rules. Motion to amend the agenda to add item 8A2 for table check number.
639.
639.
237.
237 for US postage.
All in favor to amend the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 639237 is on the table. Can we take it off the table?
Motion to remove from the table.
Support to remove from the table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to pay the check?
So moved.
Support. Rogency.
Call the question on check number 639237. Mr. LaFerty.
Yes.
Ms. Rogency.
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Green votes yes. Item passed, six to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Item 8A, general revenue funds. So moved.
Support. Rogency.
Motion by LaFerty, support by Rogency. Discussion. Mr. LaFerty.
Yes.
Ms. Rogency.
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea.
Yes.
Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski, yes. Green votes yes. Item passed, six to zero. Next item.
Item 8B, approval of the bills of the water and sewer system. So moved.
Support. Rogency.
Motion by LaFerty, support by Rogency. Discussion. Mr. LaFerty.
Yes.
Ms. Rogency.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea.
Yes.
Green votes yes. Item passed, six to zero. Next item.
Item number nine, audience.
Members of the audience who like to discuss council this evening, evening may do so under this portion. You'll have three minutes to speak. When there's one minute left, I'll let you know, and when there's three minutes left, I'll ask you to wrap up. The first speaker, Mr. Jury.
Citizens of Warren, Gary Jury, 56-year resident and 1976 graduate of Charles Stewart Mott High School, currently a City Council candidate for District 1. During the previous council meeting of May 9, council voted 52 to approve a precedent setting seating arrangement eliminating the first two center rows. The rationale was to eliminate disruptions and harassment during public comment. Apparently, President Pat Green has been asleep at the wheel for many months now. One resident, I won't even bother to mention, had been given free rein to chip away at others without consequence. That incivility went unabated, until which time this individual lost his VIP seat. Seems though now, those now having an awakening and suddenly taking umbrage, apparently embraced those inappropriate utterances until which time they took on a new direction. As controversial as those remarks were, they went without question. Presumably because the outbursts parrot those things some council members approve of yet cannot say publicly. I agree with Councilman Papandrea in his assessment. If Council President lacks the ability to maintain order and civility, he certainly isn't much of a leader. So it stands to reason that if President Green, by his own admission, loses focus and has a gavel that serves mainly as a stage prop, he certainly lacks the requisite skillset necessary to become mayor of the third-largest city in Michigan. During audience participation in front of a packed auditorium back in 2017, I too was chipped at. Then Council President Cecil St. Pierre took control and sustained order and civility.
One minute.
He didn't clear the auditorium. He didn't limit seating. He exercised his power as Council President. He stifled the outbursts. He effectively stated, hey, we got to have respect here in regards to these people in order. We're doing this for three minutes. Have respect during the three minutes, number one. Common courtesy, number two. Sometimes we don't like the speech, okay, but we have the right to free speech, and so please allow the speech and be courteous to all. That's how you maintain order and civility. His rebuke was met by thunderous applause, which restored good manners toward others. I shudder to think of the quandary our community will be sustained, subjected to if Council President Pat Green becomes mayor. Something everyone here and at home watching. Pat Green becomes mayor. Something everyone here and at home watching should absolutely take notice. If there's a community we truly want to move forward in new direction, Pat Green is not that person. Thank you all for your time, and I look forward to serving our community with honor, pride, and a deep sense of commitment. Choose wisely, I urge you when you vote. Good night.
Carmy Finn? Carmy Finn?
Hello, I'm Carmy Finn, 32631 Desmond Drive. More in my orange tonight, and I have a compliment and a complaint for the city council. I want to compliment you and thank you for declaring June 2nd Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Warren and the month of June Gun Violence Awareness Month. And I appreciate that you have done this every year, that we have asked you to, and that your commitment to honoring people who have died at the hands of a person wielding a gun. It matters that we recognize those victims and that we honor them. So I appreciate that very much, and also I appreciate the messaging on the marquee that's normally put up, and I'm hoping that will be put up again this year, as well as lighting up the City Hall orange. It's a big deal for us to see that, and we do appreciate it. Now for my little complaint. We would have all loved to have been here on the night that you actually did make that proclamation, but through some apparent scheduling conflicts, perhaps, I don't know. It was scheduled for one night, and then it wasn't that night, and then it was on the next meeting, and we didn't know about it. So we are a little disappointed, a lot of us, that we couldn't be here for that, but we are very grateful that you have chosen to publicize the... geez, I can't talk... resolution again this year. So thank you.
Thank you. Curtis Ostache.
Good evening, Council. How are you? Curtis Ostache, resident and pastor of Harvest Time Christian Fellowship here in the city of Warren. I'm a little bit concerned about what happened at the last council meeting. For many, many months, we've been anticipating about $6 million worth of spending with parks and rec. And then last meeting, you guys just unilaterally stripped most of that money from the budget and agreed to only fix one park in the northern end of the city, and the ARPA money that was supposed to be designated to improve many of the parks was just removed from the budget. There's many parks in our city, especially in the south end, that need attention. They need help, yet nearly most of the money just vanished. I'm concerned about the ARPA funds overall. If we don't use them, we're going to lose them. There's a time limit, and the federal government can pull ARPA at any time, and we just keep playing games. This is going back to November, when you guys first tabled the parks and rec spending. I don't know what's going on behind the scenes. I don't have the vision to know what's going behind the curtain, but something's going on, and I want to know why we can't spend more money on our parks and recs and why we're not budgeting the money that we originally designated, the ARPA money. We're down to $1 million. We almost had $6 million. Then you guys promised town hall meetings in terms of how the money would be allocated, how the money would be spent. No agenda, no town hall meetings, no communication with citizens about what's needed with the town hall thing. The other issue that I wanted to bring up is this issue with legacy. LaFerty, Councilman LaFerty, posted something that I thought was very disrespectful.
One minute.
He said that the legacy of our mayor will be making payments in his retirement to the city for a number of years. I mean, what's the legacy of this council? For four years, we've had the unilateral spending of Plunkett Cooney and Jeff Schroeder for 2021, 2020, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023. I don't even know if anybody knows how much money we gave to Plunkett Cooney, but I know that Mr. Schroeder supported a number of council people in their election campaigns, which I think is inappropriate. And you guys talk about unilateral spending of the administration. Basically, what we got with Mr. Schroeder and Plunkett Cooney is unilateral spending without oversight, and we just keep writing blank checks every time we want to do something legally, instead of going through our own law department. I mean, how much money have we spent? I can't find a line item for Plunkett Cooney on the city budget. You guys talk about, where's the line item for this? Where's the line item for that? Where's the line item for Jeff Schroeder? I haven't seen it. I want to know how much money we've spent for four years
Thank you, Mr. Ostache.
for Plunkett Cooney. Thank you.
Fred Neinsteed? Fred? Where is he?
He's over there.
Fred Neinsteed?
Good evening, Council. My name is Fred Neinsteed. I live in Clinton Township, but I work in Warren. Very concerned about Warren politics. I'm watching your election unravel before our eyes. The clerk, the city clerk, has received a number of challenges to the ballot. You do remember the partisan nature of the challenges that were made in the midterm elections. Many Republicans tossed from the ballot by a Democrat administration. Warren is a nonpartisan ballot. The clerk is a nonpartisan office. The clerk is taking the only position possible for nonpartisanship, and she's given everybody consternation because of it. Now, what will the council do about the charter, the rules that have been passed in a nonpartisan way for all citizens of Warren? I'm very curious. You do know that there's a rule that says a county commissioner or a school board office holder cannot qualify for the ballot. What will the council say about that? Are you nonpartisan, or are you partisan? Remember, it has to be done in court. This is what the non-decision from the clerk has made. Perhaps Mr. Schroeder will remind you what it means to sleep on your rights. You must file that action soon if you want to be nonpartisan. My guess is, you don't understand this here, so let me help you out. See this word right here? Let's take that word out and put in the word idea. I mean, a really grand idea.
One minute.
Like the Constitution. We, the people, the nonpartisan idea that people make their own laws that they have to live by. Is that what we have to understand here? That there really is a partisan council here? Is it "we, the council" that we're looking at? Please, do the right thing. Just as we were admonished for a couple of years under COVID, do the right thing. Stand up for your nonpartisan elections, or fully admit that you're partisan, one or the other.
Faith Demick?
Hello, my name is Faith Demick. I'm the young teen who was walking her little dog down the main road on 14 mile between Dequender and Ryan, when she got attacked by another dog, and we had to put her down. I am now terrified to walk in the neighborhood, and anywhere there are big dogs. I never felt this way. I never felt that way before. Now I carry mace with me all the time outside when I walk, but I will not walk in our own subdivision. I'm afraid to ride my bike in neighborhoods, and will only ride in certain areas where there are businesses and not houses. I used to walk past big dogs barking behind the fences, and it would not bother me at all. But after this happened, now I get scared if I see a big dog that is barking, and I should not have to be afraid to walk in my own neighborhood. I'm here tonight because I do not understand why a dog is not taken away after it's attacked someone or something. There should be laws to take a dog after it's attacked or killed someone or something. Last night, this came to me, and I was asking myself why there is not a law for this. Then people, dogs, small children, and babies will be safer in our community and in the city of Warren. It would make people relieved who are afraid to walk their dogs in neighborhoods or anywhere right now. During the past years, and now more than ever, I have noticed there are so many more aggressive dogs in our subdivision and in my neighborhood. The rate of dog attacks is so much higher in the US and all over, so I would like to know if you are going to make changes to keep us safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jill?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Anything I say here is about pushing for changes in our dog ordinances and to share the insanity we've been through because of the lack of sufficient laws regarding dog attacks. On Facebook, I am being labeled as evil and a dog killer, and that I am fighting to get the dog that mauled our dog out of our neighborhood for revenge toward the owner. That is absurd. I just wanted the dog removed from the house after the attack, so people and animals could be safe from it happening again. I love animals and help save animals. As you can see on the documents I'm passing through, there's one about the Facebook stuff, and then the other one is about how much my family donates to rescues every month. I have been giving and still give for many, many years over $200 per month to horse and dog rescues. My daughter and I volunteered at a horse rescue for five years to save horses and have given thousands to horse rescues. I also sold items on Facebook to bring home nine horses from slaughter. What I don't support are animals that charge after people and animals for no reason, and that bite, well, that charge after people for no reason, and bite and kill. God gave humans brains and common sense. When residents don't use common sense, the city needs to have it through better laws. People are tired of being afraid in their own neighborhoods and are voicing anger over this, and no one wants these things to happen. We lost our amazing animal in a brutal attack. Three different service dog trainers suggested I get her certified to be a service animal. Why? Because she was that quiet, loving, and gentle. She was my best friend, and her life was snuffed out in a vicious attack in front of our 15-year-old and for no reason at all. I am speaking out because I would never want anyone else to go through the hell we have. The thought that any dog like this might be allowed to stay in our city, or any city, is unthinkable.
One minute.
And I appreciate, thank you too, all you have helped me with. Jonathan LaFerty has been absolutely amazing through this process, and Patrick Green, I spoke with you too, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Marie?
Good evening. My name is Ann Marie Rogers from Responsible Citizens for Public Safety. We promote public safety through canine awareness education, and we advocate for victims of dangerous dog attacks. I'm a retired animal control officer and have worked in the animal welfare field for many years. I'm here tonight on behalf of Jill Demick, whose beloved dog Buttercup was violently attacked and killed by her neighbor's rottweiler while being walked down her street by her teenage daughter last month. As a retired animal control officer, former rottweiler rescuer and owner, I believe this rottweiler should be humanely euthanized. It has proven it is dangerous. I understand the dog has a prior attack on another domestic pet, as well as a bite on a human being. This dog is too dangerous to exist in any neighborhood and is a liability wherever it goes. The dog clearly meets the definition of a dangerous or vicious dog under Michigan Dangerous Animals Act, as well as Warren's city ordinance. A dog that attacks other dogs is a clear threat to public safety. Being forced to live on a street with vicious dogs and irresponsible owners cannot be tolerated. People should not be held hostage inside their own homes for fear of dangerous dog attacks. The city of Warren has had multiple vicious dog attacks that have made the news in recent years. Aggression in dangerous breed dogs cannot be rehabbed, loved, or trained out of them. It's genetic. It exists despite training. Only expert, hyper-vigilant owners can manage this dangerous behavior. Pit bulls and rottweilers are zero mistake dogs, and human owners make too many mistakes.
One minute.
I speak from experience here. My own mother was killed by my sister's pet rottweiler in 2021. Prior to her death, the one-and-a-half-year-old rottweiler was friendly, passed temperament tests, was neutered, and obedience-trained. As an experienced dog handler, I saw red flags that the average Joe pet owner would not have noticed. He later attacked my mother's small dog, which had to be put to sleep due to the injuries he sustained. I recommended the rottweiler be euthanized. He wasn't. Six months later, he mauled my 91-year-old mother to death and consumed parts of her body. If the council is serious about protecting its residents from dangerous dog maulings and preventing even more, you may want to consider enacting breed safety laws. This really is a matter of life and death, and there is nothing inhumane about the humane euthanasia of dangerous dogs. The safety of human beings should always come first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Demick?
Hello, my name is Dave Demick. Been a resident for the city of Warren for about 20 years now. You've probably heard some statements there, obviously, about the dog attacks in our neighborhood. Well, not only our neighborhood, but neighborhoods. So, you know, I have heard talk about, you know, doing something with the city ordinances. Well, talk to me is just cheap. I mean, so what I think, it's time to look at those city ordinances and go ahead and fix those, because, you know what? Yeah, my dog was viciously attacked. It was left for dead. My daughter had to pick up our dog and take it to the vet that was just opened up. So the vet had to drive her to another vet over at 12 Mile in Jean R. Our dog was so badly injured that we had to put it out. I mean, how many more times can people, you know, go through this? I mean, what if this was a small child? And you know what? It's probably going to happen. So I hope that you guys look at these city ordinances and really do something about it. Protect the community. Don't protect these dogs. I mean, that's just ridiculous to me. I mean, what we were told was, dogs are property. Okay? You're going to protect the property, or are you going to protect the citizens of Warren? So that's what I'm here to say, is I hope you guys think about it long and hard and really do something about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerry Bell?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Bell. I'm a Warren resident. I've resided at Warren since 2016. I'm running for Warren City Council at large. The reason why I'm running is because I, for the past four years... The reason why I'm running is because I, for the past four years, we've had this council, the majority of you besides two council members, there's some things that you as the council have participated in that really was distasteful to not only me but to the residents too as well. Starting with you, Mr. Green, you've participated in a battle with the mayor and you did it simply because you want to be mayor and you knew you couldn't beat him. So you did all the little shenanigans, both you and Councilmember Watts, Councilmember Lafferty, Angela, you too, Councilmember Rogentse, along with Mindy Moore, and you guys don't deserve our vote. What I've noticed today as well as last week, and we'll talk about last week in a minute, but what I've noticed about today is that, do you see this, Mr. Green? Oh, you don't see it? Well, I don't think you can see the paperwork whenever it comes to you running for office, right? You can't see this? It says no food or drinks in the auditorium. But you know what I noticed? Your stooge, Mr. Vander Linden, you let in here every week bringing drinks, food, but then when someone else do it, it's wrong. Just like last week, you said that we couldn't sit in the front two rows because two people feel threatened? Those two people are your stooges. They feel threatened, really? Well, what you did was wrong and you knew you was wrong when you did that. And I feel like this, Mr. Green. I feel like this, no, it hasn't been quite two minutes.
It has.
But I feel like this, Mr. Green. You're not fit for this job. Angela, you're not fit for it neither. You're like a chameleon. You change. Mr. Watts, how did it feel to be left out of a press conference? The same way you told us we couldn't sit right here in these seats? It was a pleasure looking at you cry like a baby because you couldn't get in the press conference. I loved it. And you, Mr. Lafferty? I'm not too sure about you, man, but you got some really serious anger issues. That I do know. So here's what I'm gonna do today. I'm gonna take a seat in that front row and I'm gonna sit there for the rest of the council meeting and not say anything. You can have me removed, you can do whatever you want to do, but today I'm gonna be sitting in that seat. I'm not gonna be feeling like Jim Crow today.
Three minutes.
Okay? And with that being said...
Reverend David Walters?
I wish you guys retirement quickly.
Mr. Bell, I'll ask you to be removed. Mr. Bell, if you're not in back of the seats there, after this gentleman's done speaking, we'll ask you to be removed. That's fine.
Just a second. Good afternoon and good evening, council and Warren city members. I'm Reverend David Walters. I'm also a former airborne Green Beret. I love to serve. I'd like to share a little story about Mayor Faust's character if I can. On March 2017, my sister and I started planning my mother's 100th birthday celebration. We wanted it to be memorable for our mom, our family, and our friends. 187 people attended, so we needed some more ideas. I called the mayor's office to see what kind of ideas that they could have. They said they'd have somebody get that with me. Well, later that evening, I got a call and it was Mayor Faust himself. He wanted to know some background of my mom and dad and I stayed in contact with the mayor to give more information as he needed. I let him know that there was a senator that attended my church and he said he wanted to get involved as well. Mayor Faust said that he would work with him well and they did. And he said, "Why stop there, Reverend Dave? Let's call the White House." Well, promises made, promises kept. Senator Vida was there with a tribute, state tribute for my mom. Mayor Faust wrote and read a mayoral proclamation and by the time he was done with it, there wasn't a dry eye in the house. The mayor said, "I have another surprise for you, Mrs. Walters." And in front of 187 people, he reached into his coat pocket, pulled out an envelope, and it was a letter and a centurion birthday card signed by the President of the United States of America and the First Lady. That was a great surprise and to think that that was it. My mother was nominated for Citizen of the Year that year. And to top it off, on April 28th of this year, I'm pretty sure you're all familiar, that he combined Arbor Day and tree planting ceremony for some 26 centurions. 11 of them were gone, one of them being my mom and the 15 that are still here. What a glorious day it was. Now these centurions, God bless them all, are a part of our amazing history. Thanks to Mayor Faust. There's just some of the things that he's done. I hold in my hand 200-plus accomplishments, like his 24/7 work ethic, open door policy, and what I understand, he gave his pension back. These accomplishments shows his character, his love for the job, love for the city and his citizens. I was a bit disappointed about hearing stuff on social media, but I've heard people say it's not about politics, it's about policy. It's just like Christ when he came back. He said, "I didn't come here to destroy the commandments. I came here to give you two." And that is to love the Lord your God with all your mind, your heart, and your soul and to love your neighbor as yourself. Well, from what this mayor has done, he's shown that. I want to thank the city council for allowing him to do that and making a 100-year-old lady who lasted another year and a half a joyful day every day just by remembering this party. We are the city of Warren. We can do better. We're the best city in this country and I know that. We can do better, we can be better, and if we work together, we can set the right examples for the new upcoming leaders. I want to say, may God bless the mayor and his new endeavors and may God bless this council, our city, and the newcomers that are gonna be here. Thank you all. May God bless you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening and thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Bell? Mr. Bell? Why do you want to disrupt the meeting? Officers? Oh, they're gonna leave? Is this a game? Oh, they're gonna sit in the front row? Go ahead. Really, you think?
Are you gonna remove Saul?
Sure. Motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're in recess. Gentlemen? Mr. Russian?
So the police commissioner has stated that he will not remove anyone from the front row, so the sergeant of arms, who's directly responsible here, is not gonna do their job. So if the disruptors would like to stay there and continue to disrupt... Pardon? He said he ordered them not to. So this is staged, this is a wonderful little game that you're playing, that you care to be disruptive. So let's move on. Come on, Mr. Kaczynski. I'm gonna continue on with the meeting because this is the people's meeting. If you want to be disruptive, please continue to be disruptive. That's what you do. We're trying to conduct business. Randy Hall?
Evening, council and residents of Warren. My name's Randy Hall. I've been an eight-year resident of Warren on the South End. I'm running for District Five City Council because I think it's time for a change. Because the way you guys do business is not the way it's supposed to happen and the people are tired of it. So I think it's time for a change. I'm Randy Hall, District Five.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Michelle Nard?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michelle Nard. I'm a Combe County Commissioner for District 12. I'm also a candidate for mayor of Warren. I had something I was gonna say, but after this display, I am embarrassed because I also am a member of Semcog and every time I walk into one of those meetings with everybody from the state of Michigan, they laugh at Warren because of the type of things that happened today. We do need a change in Warren and Mayor Faust was a good mayor, but his time is done. So stop crying and just accept it. His time is done and he did a good job. 2008, he saved our city. So I applaud him for that and I thank him for that, but now we need a change. We need different leadership, okay? And so now we have different people on the ballot, so let's just get over the past and let's move forward in picking the best candidates. I don't care who wins. I want to be the next mayor, but if it's somebody else, I'm gonna join in with whoever that person is and I'm gonna work with them so that we can stop getting laughed at by Oakland County, Wayne County, and everybody else, all the way up to Iskota County, they're laughing at us, okay? So citizens, other elected officials, get over yourselves and let's do what we were assigned to do. We were elected by the people to serve the people. Let's do that and let's stop the games. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina?
Well, first off, I'd like to congratulate Watts, Lafferty, Green, Moore's not here, on you finally defeating the mayor with hundreds and thousands of dollars of my tax dollars. Mr. Schroder? Excuse me, Mr. Jeff Schroder? I'm paying your bills right now. I would appreciate you look at me. And that's funny too, because the charter states that you guys can't do this. We have city attorneys. The charter states you can't do this. I brought it. I'm not stupid. Because that's what you think we all are when we come up here and talk to you. We don't know what we're talking about. So maybe you would like a lawsuit by the people of Warren. And one thing you forget about Mayor Faust is he's the people's mayor. It was our choice to choose who we wanted to sit behind the mayoral desk and it sure ain't you. It sure ain't you. I've told you before, I will make it my life's work not to see you sitting behind one of these desks in City of Warren again. And Angela, very, very shame on you. I voted for you because the mayor backed you. You don't get my vote this time. I voted for you because he backed you. He helped you and you turned on him. And Mr. Lafferty, you're an evil little man. Just an evil little, little man. And Mr. Watts, you're an ambulance chaser. On your Facebook page, all you have is you following around the Warren Fire Department.
One minute.
But every time they're trying to do something to help young kids become firefighters, you gotta question everything because you think it's some big old ploy with the mayor and the fire commissioner. You guys all should be ashamed of yourselves, every last one of you. And that attorney you have there, I'm paying his bills and I would like to see how much he's making in the next budget. Because y'all talk about Mayor Faust with the budget, but you won't show us what you're paying Mr. Schroder. And then you're talking about the perks. Oh, you're taking care of the northern end, right, Mr. Green? Because that's where your signs are. Because I don't see none down at night in Van Dyke. You won't take care of the south end, but you say that you're gonna be the people's mayor. No, you're not. You're only working for one side and one side only and that's you.
Three minutes. Christine Spencer? Christine Spencer. Ms. Rogers? Ms. Rogers? Can we get her contact information? Ms. Rogers?
What's that? You said Rogers?
Can we get your contact information?
Oh, not mine.
Just later. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Christine and I'm a resident of Warren. I've lived here for 30 years. 20 years of those living here, my friend and I, I've walked with my friend Jill and we've been walking buddies over the course of the last, over the course of the last five years and most recently, we have seen an increase in these aggressive big dogs that have been in our neighborhood. They jump, they look like they're gonna come through the windows at us. There's at least four to five houses in our sub that have dogs like that. These, some of these dogs like are outside and they attack each other as we're walking by practically going through the fence. The most recent encounter was with my next-door neighbor just a couple days ago telling me we were outside with our dog, telling, telling me to keep my dog away from his dog or my dog would be his dinner tomorrow. And he is a pit bull and my dog is just a little half an ease, like 20 pounds. Why are the owners, why aren't the owners in Warren held accountable? Why are these dogs even like acting like this? I do not feel safe anymore in my neighborhood. Jill and I have been walking our dogs for over 10 years and one day because of a certain dog, he was allowed to get out of the property only to maul little Buttercup in front of a 15-year-old. If the owners were responsible in their property and taking care of these dogs, this wouldn't have happened. And I have a child, she has Down Syndrome and my husband has Alzheimer's and if this had been them walking that dog, I do not know what would have happened. I just want to feel safe in my neighborhood. I've been here too long and we carry mace now, but our lives are forever changed because of this incident and I just hope that someone would consider changing some of the rules with the dogs around so we could feel good. Thank you.
Thank you. M.D. Alam?
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm Dr. M.D. Robbie Alam, member of the Greater Community. I represent the Alliance of Southeast Asian American Labor, ASAL Michigan Chapter as a proud Bangladesh-American community member. This evening, I just observed some incidents or general citizens engagement. Warren is getting out of control within the citizens' activities, the council, the mayor himself. As a city, it is the third largest city, but we are a small community, Bangladesh-American community. We've been called our community. We've been called our name, but you know what? We are here to just represent our community. I'd like to thanks and remind this body that this July 1st and 2nd, the Bangladesh-American Festival will be held here in the city of Warren. We are really happy as a community and Bangladesh-American community. We really appreciate for this opportunity for having this festival. Second, there are few community members, young adults, maybe perhaps naive and rookie, but they're trying to run for office. Our community will be fully standing behind the community and will be supporting and try to do the best. Maybe what we have, whether it is blind and blame or lame, but we will do our best fight. Thank you so much. God bless you. Good evening.
Gloria Sancker?
Counsel, I'm surprised at you.
Counsel, I'm surprised at you. It's wrong to restrict an area for the public to sit. I'm not sure council has the role of being judge of who can and cannot sit in the front row seats. Open seating has been this way for decades. Why you change now? What's the reason now that didn't exist before? It appears that council's intention is to keep certain people from a distance. This is wrong. This is not what council should do. This has to stop. A little wrongdoing can start to be a big wrongdoing. This is a public forum. This is not your determin, not your decision to decide who sits where. You have a police officer in the back. Should any person get out of hand? This you can do. But restricting and prohibiting us from sitting in these front row seats that we taxpayers paid for is beyond your jurisdiction. This is the people's chambers, not for you to limit or divide the people with the closing of this front section. We will live in, we live in a free country. This includes people choosing where they want to sit when they come here to speak to you, our leaders. I hope you will rectify this soon. It does not promote unity. I'm Gloria Sanker, running for city council at large. If elected, I won't prohibit people from sitting in these front seats. I will encourage it. It's a violation of citizens' rights. Thank you.
Sayed Hussain. Sayed Hussain.
Good evening, council. How are you? My name is Sayed Hussain, and I'm resident of Warren since two thousand. Counsel, I'm here to thank you guys for allowing us to holding a festival on July first and July second. And when I moved to twenty-two years ago, city of Warren, was only a few families was in the city. Suddenly, you can see now a lot of people from Hamtramck. They moved to Warren, Sterling Heights. Now Warren city is moving. Like, around, like I said, like fifteen to twenty thousand people living in the city. And I raised my three children for the, at the city. And I work for one of the postal service and Warren location. So I know this city, you know, means all the council and the mayor was there for us. And I mean, you guys did a lot of good things, so we moved to the city. So I know a lot of people, and I mean, we here. So we wanna bring, like, more people, but we don't wanna bring it to a day. So please join us on first and second. And you guys are invited. And thank you again, you know, I mean, helping us to hold the festival. And you have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Akikul Shamim.
Good evening, council. My name is Akikul Shamim. I'm the resident of the city of Warren since two thousand and seven. We are is a small community, Bangladeshi-American community, moved from the Hamtramck and Detroit to city of Warren because of a lot of people need to the residential house, city of Warren, because of city of Warren have a good reputation. Today, I hear that as in the racial issue about the front seat and back seat. So we are living this United States of America, not any third-world country. So Mayor Faust give you us chance to do the festival July first and second. And thank you for that. And thank you for council. We invite to everybody to join with us July first and second in the city square is in the festival. So, and two weeks ago, we saw that some people came in to the council. They proved to there is a, represent the hundred fifty thousand Bangladeshi-American in state of Michigan. It is that those people are moved from the Hamtramck and Detroit. They are not allowed to do the, any activities in the Detroit and Hamtramck. Now they're coming to the new location, the city of Warren. Make you like confused to they represent the Bangladeshi whole community. Either I am not represent the whole Bangladeshi community. So don't confuse. I request to the council and city administration, don't involve with the community politics. Please leave us to alone, and you do, you do the, your job. Thank you, Mayor. Allow to us do the festival, and Mayor is not a racist. Thank you.
Michael Howard.
Someone left their cellphone, just FYI. Thank you, guys, for recognizing where orange. You know, this crime is becoming a serious issue across our nation, even our city. A lot of times, the question of crime is answered with more police, which puts police in danger, it potentially over-pleases the population. It would, I would love to see a crime preventative approach taken to some of these. I previously met with the chief of gang squad in Detroit, and he said, "Police can only police crime, but churches, community organizations, and nonprofits can intercede and prevent crime." And so seeing, like, a comprehensive plan on crime prevention and, and supporting our community policing efforts would be great. So thank you for that. Another thing is I handed you guys flyers for Juneteenth. We're having Warren's first-ever Juneteenth celebration here at city hall, or at city square. Juneteenth is a federal holiday honoring, they are celebrating the actual end of slavery. The Emancipation Proclamation did not actually end slavery. It took military action by, by the president and the general to go down to Texas and actually liberate the last slaves in America, and that happened on June nineteenth. So that's where you get the phrase "Juneteenth" coming from. It's a holiday that has been celebrated for nearly two hundred years in our nation. And so this year, we, the first time, we're having an amazing band come in, food trucks, and just wanted to invite you guys out and make the community aware of it. So look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Kaja Hussain. Kaja Hussain.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me a couple minutes to speak here. My name is Kaja Hussain, and I'm resident of city of Warren since two thousand and twelve. I am running for city council, District One, upcoming primary election on August eighth. I finished my high school in two thousand and fourteen, and I finished my bachelor from Wednesday. And currently, I'm working as a general morts, as an electrical engineer. So I just came here to introduce myself real quick and make a couple points here that I'm running for the city election. There is a lot of reason behind that I seen from our current city councillor that we're not very happy about it. And one of these example, I just seen that I'm very disappointed about it, that the races, that no one can sit on the front row, why? And, and there's a lot of question behind it. And along with this, there is a lot of reason behind from, from the current city council department. So there is many of reasons, like, that motivating me to running the city council that if I elected, I'll be work on those things for the race, especially for those racial, you know, comments and, and the behavior going along with the community in, in the city of Warren. And also, I came here just to be thankful to all the councillor and the mayor of city of Warren that we're holding a festival on July second and third. So thank you all for supporting behind of that. And so I just came here to thank, thanks from our community that will be running the festival from Bangladeshi community on July second and third. Thank you again, and good evening, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Joel Vanderlinen. And did anyone leave their cellphone on the podium? Someone's cellphone? Don't know. Leave it there. We'll find, we'll figure it out.
Joel Vanderlinen, longtime Warren resident. Before we get into the specific themes, you guys start off with council business about neighborhood problems, all these blight problems and stuff like that. Well, blight can't do their job because they have to guard the mayor at his press conference. Sit there at the front doors and not let council people in. And let citizens in. When you announce a press conference at eleven o'clock, open to the public, it's open to all the public, not just the mayor's buddies. Now, we had two armed guards, armed guards in front of the doors there. Mr. Kirker or Cursor or Charlie Nicky and Bob Scott. Both of them carrying a piece on their hip. Both of them are stopping people from coming into a public, open meeting. Even putting their hands on some, saying, "No, you can't come in." That's assault. With a weapon in their hand, under the Lucado's rules now, that's a felony. They should be arrested. As for Mr. Bell's actions here today, to me, this seems like it's a violation of his probation, and these police officers should be down here arresting him for violating his probation. As for the chief saying not to arrest anyone or to do anything, that's a conflict of interest. That's a dereliction of duty. This council should take a vote of no confidence and have him removed because he is not obeying what he was sworn in to do.
One minute.
Now, it even makes me more sick and upset at the people that are coming up here crying the most about this council for trying to get things done right while the mayor plays his childish asinine games. Excuse my French. Are all the ex-felons running for city council? Mr. Bell felon. Mr. Jury felon. According to the city charter, they should not even be on the ballot. It makes me sick. Angela, you showed your true colors. You finally cried and stood behind the people. I am so freaking proud of you, it's not even funny. Thank you. Mr. Schroder, you are so great up there. You make that asinine man that wants to call himself the city attorney, show his true colors.
Three minutes. Wrap it up, please.
I'll finish up my statements that this city needs leadership, and it's not the bozos that we have in there right now. This city needs an enema. That's all the administrators at city hall need to go, including the mayor, the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderlinen.
And I want this felon arrested. I want the laws followed. If I had to follow them, why are they? And those police officers aren't gonna get their job. I want them removed as well.
Del War answer. Mr. Vanderlinen. Mr. Vanderlinen. Have a seat. Mr. Vanderlinen, have a seat.
Should I proceed?
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Mr. Answer.
This is Del War answer. I was not ready to come this, come to this meeting. I was watching live from Warren TV, and I saw that, you know, you guys are restricting people that you cannot sit there, and few of the residents, they're saying that they're gonna sit there. I wanna ask you a question. Fred Green. Lafferty. Gary Watts. You are elected by those people. You have no right to restrict anyone from, anyone where they have to sit or where they can, they can sit. People did not give you this right to restrict people, divide people. You are restricting people. You gotta stop doing this thing. And I saw that another, another thing. Yes, there was a misunderstanding from our community for their festival. And I saw that on news. You guys are saying that Mayor did this racist thing. We all, all of, we know that. This is the election time. And you are trying to do, use this propaganda against Mayor for your political benefit. Mayor did not do any racist thing. If Mayor did the racist thing, I should not have been the planning commission. There is a six people from different community. They're in the different commission. And you all trying to use this against somebody you don't like. People liked him, that's why he was there twelve years. And you fought over there, she's not there. You fought, destroying this city. You gotta stop this thing. And people, people will decide, people will decide this November that who should be there.
One minute.
Yes, I have one minute. I wanna talk about this thing. What you are doing, you are destroying city. You are damaging our city image again and again. You gotta stop doing this thing. People have right to sit where they wanna sit. You cannot make any rule that you cannot sit there, you can sit there. You gotta stop this thing. And I, I wanna tell all of those residents, this is your time to talk. Election is here. We don't want to see any of them that can restrict us. Are you guys okay there? Yes, this is the time. Thank you.
Next item.
Item number ten, announcements. Ten A, National Cancer Survivors' Day Resolution.
Ms. Rogenczy.
Thank you. Onto another topic. As many of you know, or may not know, I, as of twelve weeks Monday, I am a breast cancer survivor. At forty-one. At forty-one, I was diagnosed. It is not run in my family, and I do not carry the genetic BRCA gene that would make me predisposed. And I share my story and wanna honor everyone who has struggled or overcome cancer. If my story can make one person go and get a screening, get their mammogram, get any screening test that they need in order to prevent cancer, I hope that my, by sharing my story, that that happens. I would not be here if it wasn't for a routine mammogram that likely saved my life in the future. So I wanna honor all of cancer survivors, which are defined as anyone living with a history of cancer from the moment of diagnosis to the remainder of life. And whereas National Cancer Survivors' Day is an annual treasured celebration of life that is held across the United States on the first Sunday in June, on this day, people come together to commemorate, commemorate cancer survivors. The day further serves to remind us all that cancer is a disease without boundaries, crossing the lines of color, race, creed, sex, and age, which affects not only the lives of those inflicted with the disease, but their loved ones as well. And whereas our National Cancer Survivors' Day, thousands gather to honor cancer survivors and to show the world that life after a cancer diagnosis can be fruitful, rewarding, and inspiring. This day also provides an opportunity to draw attention to the ongoing challenges of cancer survivorship and promote the need for more resources, research, and a survivor-friendly legislation to improve cancer survivors' quality of life. And whereas National Cancer Survivors' Day further allows cancer survivors the opportunity to recognize the people who have helped them through their journey in addressing and fighting cancer, including family members, friends, coworkers, and medical professionals. And whereas due to advances in cancer prevention, early detection, treatment, and follow-up care, more people than ever before are surviving the disease. In the United States alone, more than eighteen million people are alive today after being diagnosed with cancer. with cancer, and a number of cancer survivors is projected to increase over 22 million by 2030. Whereas nonetheless, surviving cancer can leave a host of problems in its wake, including physical, emotional, and financial hardships that often persist, persist for years after diagnosis and treatment. Cancer survivors are also at a greater risk for developing second cancers and other health conditions. Whereas cancer survivors face numerous challenges during and after treatment, including limited access to cancer specialists and promising new treatments, difficult, difficulty accessing health insurance and life insurance coverage, difficulty finding jobs, and economic burdens due to mounting medical expenses, lost wages, and lost productivity. And whereas, in addition to these challenges, cancer survivors may face emotional struggles, strains on personal relationships, and profound fear of cancer recurrence. Whereas a continued focus on providing resources, performing research, and adopting survivor-friendly legislation is needed to improve the quality of life for cancer survivors both during and after treatment, now therefore it be resolved that the city council of the city of Warren declares Sunday, June 4th, as National Cancer Survivors' Day.
Motion by Ms. Rogenczyk.
Support Lafferty.
Support by Lafferty, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Mr. President, excuse me. This past weekend was Armed Forces' Day. It was a day to recognize all the veterans and those that are retired, and also those that are currently serving our country. A staggering statistic was revealed at a, a military ceremony that I participated, I participated in being in the honor guard at Great Lakes Ceremony Cemetery for a ceremony honoring those that have already passed on. The statistical information now is that more Gulf veterans, Gulf War veterans are now surpassing in the amount of deaths that are happening compared to those that fought in the Vietnam War. And it's because of what the Gulf War veterans were exposed to with the depleted uranium and other toxins that the Gulf War veterans were exposed to during the Gulf War. It's kind of sad because the, those that we were honoring this year were Gulf War veterans. And the amount of Gulf War veterans that passed away, a lot of the people I served with back in 90 and 91. And it's a, it's a time to reflect on what happened, and it's a time also to reflect on that we did win, we did liberate Baghdad, and those people are free. And now they're amongst a lot of the citizens that we have here in America that were there under the tyranny of Saddam Hussein. So there was good that came out of the Gulf War. So, in honor of that service, there was a ceremony at Great Lakes Cemetery that I attended, as well as, I want to say, thank a shout-out to Mission Barbecue in two locations, Troy and Sterling Heights, that provided food at no cost to the veterans at all, and to their immediate family member, spouse. They provided for their sustenance too, at those two locations. So, I want to thank Mission Barbecue for doing that as well. And that was this weekend for Armed Forces' Day, Armed Services' Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. Any other announcements or comments? I've got one. So, we're in the election season, and things get a little volatile, as you can see. There's a very good reason why we asked the first two rows to be vacated. Did I get two calls? Did I get 20 calls from people asking for some separation between the podium where they speak and audience, or on an agenda item? Does it matter if I got two, or 20, or 100? People said that they were concerned about their safety, they were concerned about being catcalled, chirped at, comments made, and they didn't feel safe. So if the women of our community don't feel safe, and these, most of them were women who called, because of Mr. Bell or Mr. Jerry are making comments towards them while they're speaking, we are going to address it. The officers here tonight, under direct order of Commissioner Dwyer, were directed not to do anything. And they are following orders. I don't agree with the orders, but they're orders, and they followed them. I have a bigger problem with Commissioner Dwyer violating the charter, because he is a sergeant of arms for this meeting, and he didn't do his duty. What the repercussions for that are, I don't know. Charter violations, what, $500? But if people want to violate, yes, I know. Thank you, Mr. Neinsteit. If people want to sit in the front row, great, we'll move the podium. We'll move it over here. That's all we want to do is create a separation, so that people feel safe and feel comfortable. They don't feel attacked. But if we want to continue this, I don't know, we'll make a different change. But we do have the right to control the room. There's 500-plus seats in here, and removing 18, so people feel comfortable in coming up to the podium, is not too much to ask. Next item.
Mr. President.
Now, we're going to next item.
Mr. President, I would like to speak. This is my announcement.
No, I asked him.
My announcement is this, that the police chief did the right thing. These officers are here to enforce the law, not to enforce your little silly, little council rules.
Mr. Papadrea, you don't feel, feel that women should feel safe in here?
Oh, quit your BS, Pat.
No, no, no.
You don't get any calls, you're making it up. Where are those women?
Next item.
Where are those women? Mr. Dwyer, the commissioner, and these officers know, they are here to enforce the law, not your silly ass rules.
None.
Mr. President.
You are so welcome.
Mr. Papadrea is...
They're juvenile.
Conduct unbecoming, conduct unbecoming.
Well, the grumpy old man wants to pitch in again. Haven't you guys been beaten enough? Just keep your mouth shut, take your lumps. You'll be gone in 90 days.
I don't care.
You will be gone in 90 days.
Man, you're good, Ron.
If fighting corruption is, is wrong, then I'll continue to do it.
You'll be gone, and I'll be sitting here cheering.
Next item. Item 11, public hearings, administrative hearings, there are none. Item number 12, miscellaneous correspondence, item A, consideration and adoption of a resolution, adopting the 2023-2024 Housing and Community Development Action Plan and application for the 2023-2024 CDBG Home and HOPA Funds.
Motion to approve.
Support Rogenczyk.
Motion by Watts, support by Rogenczyk. Discussion. Call the president. Mr. Lafferty.
Is it done?
So, green light on?
No, it is, sorry.
Good evening, Ms. Tarashenko and Ms. Hensley. This is the resolution for bringing all of the, the groups together and formulation of the program, correct?
Yeah, this is the, the formal grant application that we'll be sending to HUD. So the resolution that you approve tonight, this will be the budget that is adopted and that we send to HUD for approval.
Okay, and were any changes? I know that there was a number of requests for increases. Were we able to accommodate any of those increases?
Yes, so in the CDBG budget, what we did was, when we got the actual formal number, numbers from HUD, we were able to increase, so our proposed budget was $1 million, and we actually got $45,000 extra. So what we did was, we increased St. Vincent de Paul. They were proposed at $25,000, we increased them to $30,000, which is what they asked. We also increased the road paving project, and we also increased the admin line item. So those are where the increases went.
Wonderful, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Any others? Any others? Call the question, Mr. Watts.
Yes.
Ms. Rogenczyk.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty.
Yes.
Mr. Papadrea.
Yes.
Green votes yes, I did pass 6 to 0. Next item.
Mr. President.
Mr. Watts.
I don't know where this was falling. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sir, I just want to let you know, someone's keys are down here.
Keys and a phone.
What's that? I'm sorry. The phone is gone, but the keys are here.
Okay. Well, they'll come back, they can't leave. Mr. President. Mr. Watts.
I forgot one item earlier, if I may. Ms. Camp lost her mother-in-law, passed away this last week, 57-year resident of Warren, Dolores Roy, and I was wondering if we could just ask for a moment of silence.
Give a moment of silence for Ms. Roy. Thank you, our condolences to your family, Ms. Camp. Thank you for reminding us, Mr. Watts. Next item.
Item 12B, request of city treasurer Lori Varnwell to open a money market account with Fifth Third Bank titled "City of Warren EMT Investment Account: Consideration and Adoption of a Resolution." So moved.
Motion by Lafferty.
Support.
Support by Rogenczyk. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Council, I appreciate it. So, as I'm sure many of you know, we've all been following the market very closely. My job as treasurer is to, of course, make sure the funds are secure, but also yielding the top investment dollar that, that it can. And so we, we found a really great deal with Fifth Third to kind of even further grow our EMT account. So we, it's a, it's a money market account, going to get over 4% interest, which is excellent. We are constantly looking at rate sheets to ensure, like I said, that our tax dollars are where they should be, not only for security, but for investment return. And...
Thank you.
Mr. President, if, if, if you'll allow me, I, I just wanted to share, I was, I usually don't do this, but I was just so completely upset at some of the things that happened tonight during audience. And so many people on this council, like myself, have been talked to by residents who want to come share their voice, who want to come share how they feel. Women, especially women department heads like myself, who represent the citizens of Warren, feel intimidated. Come, it's already intimidating enough, being up here, just so you know. But it, it just adds a whole other layer of being completely afraid. And no one should feel that fear to share their voice, to share their thoughts, to share what's going on in our departments, to share with residents what's going on, you know, in all these areas. And it's not, you know, residents can come up here and say mean and hateful things, and that's their right to do that. But not at the expense of making other people feel like they can't also share their voice. And Warren should be an inclusive city where we all can share what's on our hearts, what's on our minds, what our dreams are, what's going, what our dreams are and goals are for Warren. And I know when I come up to the microphone, I know it's not always the most exciting things that I have to say. I think they're exciting, but, but it is something that, you know, as a department head, I want to move Warren forward, and we all want to move Warren forward, even the people who spoke tonight to audience. And I think, I think this is not a rule to hurt anyone's civil liberties or anything like that, it's just being conscious, especially of women, who might feel that their voice is being quieted. So, thank you for indulging me on that.
Thank you. Call the question.
Wait, Mr. President.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Kaczynski.
Ms. Varnwell, I've had various conversations with you recently about the markets and solvency of some of these banks. Comerica and Fifth Third were one of the two that we talked about. I am concerned about the financial solvency of Fifth Third. I'm concerned about the financial solvency of Comerica, quite frankly. What happened with PacWest. I'm not sure, I'm not trying to micromanage your department, I'm not trying to micromanage you. Okay, but if we're in charge of the purse strings for the city, I don't want to, the, the police union, I don't want the fire union coming to this council and saying, "Hey, what the hell were you guys doing? Don't you guys watch the news?" Okay? I do not think that Fifth Third is financially solvent, in my opinion, from what I've seen or what I've read, and I do not feel that Comerica is financially solvent. I think we're on a teeter, both of those going under, as some of the other financial institutions have. It's just a matter of time. So, my vote will reflect on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, if I can respond to that.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. You have, you know, come to me several times, asked a lot of great questions, and I am, I'm glad that council as a whole, and particularly you, are concerned about these issues. We talk about these issues a lot in my office, and also some, I feel, some of the brightest investment minds in the state as well, that I speak to on a regular basis. And you, you're right, the, the regional banks are a little stressed at the moment, and a lot of that has to go back to, you know, the rate hikes that are happening at the Fed level. A lot of the regional banks, like Comerica, to use them as an example, they, you know, get a lot of their profit from loans, and then they make it back from deposits. Well, what's happening is, because the Feds has rates so high, it's stressing the profits of a lot of the regional banks. However, in a lot of my investigation, talking to top people at Comerica, at Fifth Third, at really all the financial institutions that we have, at this time, there's no direct proof that these banks are at risk to go under. That said, I have a very strong eye on the situation, and will continue to be very diligent. And this, you know, Comerica is on the watch list right now, and that's why this account we're actually opening was at Comerica, and I've elected to move it to Fifth Third. So, we, like I said, I, we're not, we're not in the panic phase, but we are definitely in the, let's make sure that we are continuing to, continue to diligently follow this financial situation, me and my staff, and not just that, our countless advisors who oversee our funds. And then, you mentioned the police and fire union, I actually sit on that board, and all those funds are not in the banking institutions. Those are in the marketplace. So we have, and I can, like I said, anyone who wants to see, like, all, all the breakdown on that, we have, you know, large-cap equities, small-cap equities, bonds. So, I mean, we have a whole breakdown by our rules and regulations, but they're not, like, in Comerica or in these banks. Comerica is our custodial account for police and fire, as well as general retirement. So when we need funds to distribute, then yes, it goes through there, and then we cut the checks to the, our police and fire officers, as well as our general employees. But it's not that our police and fire money is in a bank, it's in the marketplace, which is by law.
Mr. President. Mr. Kaczynski.
Again, I'm not trying to micromanage, I'm not trying to tell you what you, and that charter says I'm prohibited from doing that. I'm just, I'm sure this is going to pass. I'm in the minority on this here, probably one vote, so it's still going to pass, not going to have an issue with that. I'm just stating my objections, I'm being the dissenting, objecting point of view on this here, and it's just the way I see it. It's just from what I've read, the research I've done, as a layperson, not as a financial expert as you are, but just as a layperson. And I have to take the approach of the CYOA aspect of it. Okay? And that's what I'm looking at. I'm very hesitant about even having my money in the credit union right now. And I, we discussed this before, I think we would be better off, because I don't see any credit unions going under right now. I think they're all financially solvent. And I said, you know, maybe that's the direction we should look into going into with some of these accounts, would be the credit unions. And we have several of them around Warren. So I asked before, why don't we have some accounts with some credit unions to kind of balance that out? But again, that's your decision, not mine. I'm just suggesting it as a course of action. I think we're allowed to do that as council people, a suggestion's not necessarily telling somebody what to do.
Absolutely. And I, like I said, I am so open to suggestions, I don't just answer to the Warren residents, but I also answer in some capacity to this, to this body as well. And with the credit unions, just for aside, with Public Act 20, which is what I follow, what our charter kind of mirrors as well, which is a state law, there's not... what our charter kind of mirrors as well, which is state law, there's not, you know, a lot of wiggle room for credit unions, but I know it is something that different treasurers have brought up, as well as other things that, in Public Act 20, that need to be updated. So, like I said, you're not alone in that idea, other treasurers have, you know, brought that forward too, and I hope that we really, as a state, really update some of Public Act 20, because I think that would be important.
Mr. President, just a note, I have not received any financial contribution from any credit union, and I don't work for a credit union, I'm just simply stating as a option, that's all. Thank you.
Any others? And as a layperson in finance somewhat, I do rely on the competency and professionalism of the treasurer to make recommendations after doing their due diligence. Any further comment? Call the question, Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Ms. Rogansey?
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
No.
Green votes yes, item passed five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and your postage passed, I don't know if you saw that earlier? Okay. Next item.
Next item, item 12C, Proposed City of Warren UAW Local 412, Unit 59, Contract Extension Agreement, So Moved.
Support, Rogansey.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Rogansey, discussion? Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Ms. Rogansey?
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski? Yes. Green votes yes, item passed six to zero. Next item.
Item 13A, Council Business, Tabled from May 23rd, Table 2, May 23rd, 2023, Council Member Jonathan Lafferty, Discussion in Ray, Update from Administration Regarding Hotel Home on Bellew, Building Department, Zoning, Property Maintenance, and Fire, Motion to Remove from the Table.
Support, Rogansey.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Rogansey, to remove from the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Items off the table, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, with discussion.
Support.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Rogansey, discussion, Mr. Lafferty.
Thank you. The items are the departments that I'd like to comment on this, the Building Department, Zoning, Property Maintenance, and Fire, please.
I see Fire here.
I see Fire, and I don't know if, Mr. Vincent, if you've had any involvement in the Hotel Home on Bellew?
He indicated no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McAdams, one out of four.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening. Do you have any status update as to the Hotel Home? This is the, just as a reminder, this is the home that is operating as a hotel on Bellew, just south of Chicago Road, and where multiple rooms are being rented out individually, and the space is being treated as an amenity space for the guests of the Hotel Home.
Yes, after reading or staying abreast of council actions during our absence, I did see the request for investigation into that. I did have the fire marshal look into it. Because of the current zoning of the facility, we have no jurisdiction, Fire has no jurisdiction over that particular facility. It is zoned, the process for which it is zoned is outside of our purview. However, if, it's my understanding, well, he did refer the matter to building who said that they were investigating it and had taken some preliminary steps, and given that we are outside of that, we weren't privy to whatever actions they did take or didn't take, we were just ancillary told they were involved in it already.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your comment on that, at least. So, how long do we need to wait? I'm looking at everybody on council here. At what point do we hold the administration accountable for answering to the taxpayers?
Mr. President? I think Mr. Watts might have an answer, is that rhetorical?
This was brought up two months ago, these residents continue to live with a problem. Why do they continue to live with it? Because they have no choice in the matter, because the city is not responding to them. Now, you can stand up here and call me names, and you can attack me in the Warren Weekly, but I'm doing my job. And yes, I'll take the, what did he call it, the nubs?
I have no idea.
The rumps?
I wasn't listening.
I'll take the slaps to the face, because I was elected to represent my neighbors, and I will do this with every breath I have for as long as I'm up here, and I won't back down. So, we can continue to table this item and bring it back, because the taxpayers that are paying everyone's salaries in the city deserve help, they deserve an answer, they deserve to live in a neighborhood, they did not purchase a home to live next to a Holiday Mr. Watts had a comment, I'll defer before I table again.
I just want to reflect on the same thing, because this stuff is going on all over town. This administration is non-responsive to complaints, period. People call every day, and they're like, "What are we gonna do?" I've had people say, "I put my house up for sale, I'm out of here." They're tired of it. This administration doesn't do anything. And a classic example is, he called and he recruited all these people to come tonight, it's election year, you know, it's okay, I can sit here, listen to it, it's not a big deal. I've just been watching TV anyways, so, you know, he thinks it's funny, and his administrators think it's funny. Well, it's not funny. We're the third-largest city in the state of Michigan, and we got a mess, we have an absolute mess. Drive along all the roadways and look at the grass that's uncut. All the while, the grass is not being cut, the Director of Public Service is busy putting together political hit pieces in his office, instead of making sure his departments are out cutting the grass, trimming the trees. There hasn't been any trees trimmed, I don't know how long, in this community. You know, one of our judges posted pictures the other day of some beautiful cherry blossom trees, and talked about how Mayor Bates really wanted to make, you know, this place look good, and, you know, the streets look good when you drive down them, and now all those trees have gone untrimmed for the all of Mayor Faust's administration. They look terrible, they're gonna have to be cut down, they're that bad. Last week, instead of having two property maintenance people out doing their job on the street, they were blocking a doorway, which is gonna be my next question at some point, about what our policy is, I'm doubt if HR will probably know, because they don't know what a portal is, but are we allowing these property maintenance guys, is this covered under our entrance, that they're carrying weapons? You know, our police officers carry weapons for a reason, but I'm not so sure property maintenance should be carrying a weapon, but everybody should be out doing their job and getting things done, they should be proud to work here, if they're not proud to work here, find another place to go. So, I'm just tired of it, every day I get calls, I probably had, I was on vacation, I've been on vacation this week, and today I had five or six phone calls that I took from people that are just totally disgusted that nothing is getting done. You know, when you got a guy sitting at home, he's got cameras out front, and he records, the thing goes back, and he can tell you exactly what time of the day property maintenance drive by, they park, they never get out of the car, they don't do anything, and it's documented, documented, documented. I mean, this is unbelievable, that we would have city management doing something like this, so.
Mr. Watts?
That's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question. How many times have I brought up the auto repair facility at Ryan and Norbert?
Probably 10 times.
And do you know there's no file on it?
Imagine that.
There's not one file, not one note is in there, they've never gone out.
Yep.
And the residents call, and they don't do anything.
Yep.
Mr. Lafferty, your item?
Motion to table, date certain, Tuesday, June 13th.
Support. Motion by Lafferty, support by Watts, to table to a date specific of June 13th, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Motion, item's tabled.
He wants to support inaction to the taxpayers, that's okay.
Next item.
Item number 13B, Table 2, May 23rd, 2023, Council Member Jonathan Lafferty, Discussion in Ray, Update from City Attorney's Office Regarding Animal Control and Related Ordinances, Motion to Remove from the Table.
I'll support it. Motion by Lafferty, support by Watts, to remove from the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion to...
To move the table.
Motion to approve, with discussion?
Support.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Watts, discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lafferty.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I don't know if you have specific questions, or if you just want a general summary.
All right, so, I am, let me find paperwork, the paperwork was delivered to us just before the meeting, so I have not had an opportunity to review this. Could you kindly summarize the memo dated May 9?
Ultimately, vicious dog and dangerous dog, ultimately, it needs to be made by a court of law. Once that determination has been made, then comes into play regulations as far as keeping the dog inside the house, or keeping it at least four feet away from an exterior fence, having it muzzled when you're walking it off your property. So, I've reviewed the state of Michigan laws, the City of Warren ordinances, as well as summaries of basically the other 50 states in the United States, and I can't say, I mean, there's always room for improvement and tweaking ordinances, but I mean, Warren's ordinances are right on par with the rest of the 50 states, as far as these laws go. And I know a big issue with, in response to the situation that just happened, was the removal of the dog right of way. And I mean, from a legal standpoint, it's questionable, I mean, dogs, animals are referred to as property, you have to have probable cause or a warrant to seize property, and ultimately, I think our ordinances right now indicate, or say that, in order to do that, there has to be an imminent danger to the health and safety of the public, or it has to be ordered by a court. Another problem we have, I did meet, I believe this was addressed back in April, right after that, I did meet with Animal Control Officer Nicole Fear, as well as Sergeant Spybrook and Sergeant Allah, with respect to maybe Animal Control's procedures in handling these situations. I think there probably is some room for improvement, and again, every case is gonna be different, but I think maybe fine-tuning some of the policies and procedures that Animal Control uses may help in alleviating future problems of this nature. Animal Control, and he has two kennels for dogs in the basement, so a lot of times, and I know the city has contracts with different organizations to house animals, according to Animal Control, frequently, when they call, they're fault, they can't take any animals. So, space to house these animals, I think, is certainly an issue. I know Warren doesn't have its own shelter or facility to house these animals, animals at large, or the dangerous animals, pending a court determination that the animal be euthanized, or that it be returned home under certain conditions, so I don't know if that answers any questions, but certainly, there's some room for improvement, and after speaking with Animal Control and the Police Department, I think we've got some ideas to fine tune these ordinances, and I...
So, Ms. Pierce, I'm gonna just go over some tertiary details here, and help guide a future discussion, because I need to go through this, look at the ordinances, convene with you, and then perhaps, you know, we'll, what I would probably suggest is a committee of the whole, that we can discuss in greater detail, and then bring a more formal resolution. So, one, you say in this letter, this is your letter, it's signed by Mr. Vincent, but I would assume you...
I unfortunately was sick this whole week, so, I prepared it Monday night, and he signed it in my absence on Tuesday.
Understood. To your knowledge, there were not any ordinances that were not enforced on the date of the attack?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. And then, after some comments here, our ordinances can be improved by defining some key terms?
Right now, and again, this is subject to interpretation, right now, it's my interpretation of our ordinances, that in order to, a lot of times, Animal Control will just write a vicious dog ticket, and you go to court, and it really, as I'm reading them, unless there's been a previous determination by a court that your dog is vicious or potentially dangerous, there's no restrictions that can be placed on that animal, I mean, there has to be a judicial determination, and it's after that determination that's been made, that then you can write someone a ticket for violating the rules and regulations that are in place.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It makes sense, I'm gonna stop you there for a moment, but the, our ordinances as written today, it permits the police to seize and impound the dog pending a hearing.
Correct.
So, immediately after an attack?
No.
No.
Not, no.
Need to clear.
Okay, let's say you have a dog at large. And again, this is my legal interpretation, you have a dog at large, no one's claimed the dog, Animal Control's out there right away, yes, they could take the animal at that point, because there's no one to take the animal. Let's say an attack happens, and the owner is there, they've got the dog, they take it inside their house, do the police, do they have the authority to seize that animal right then and there? I don't think so. I think that's when they need to petition the court, to have the court order that that animal be turned over pending a judicial determination.
Okay, because there is a state statute noted here that requires the court to order the owner to immediately turn the dog over to Animal Control, the Humane Society, licensed vet...
Interject a question.
Yes.
So, is that limitation statute, or our ordinance?
It's really both, I mean, our ordinance is similar to the state statute, they're different in some respects. I mean, there's the dog law of 1919, which I think was primarily protecting livestock from animals, from dogs. There's the Dangerous Animals Act, the state statutes, and our ordinances are, I think they go, our ordinance, I think, are a little bit more specific than the state law, honestly.
Is there anything in the Police Department, from a policy standpoint, of making a determination that the, if the owner of the dog takes it back to their house, is there anything in policy that says that they'll make sure that the dog is still secure?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of that.
Is there anything in policy that says that the police will make sure that the dog is secure at that house, because in this case, the dog was getting out? In the case that we're speaking of here, and why this is all coming up?
They are, I mean, they're supposed to be quarantined for a period of 14 days after that happens, and that means stay in the house, out on a leash to go to the bathroom, and that's it.
Yeah, okay.
So, but therein lies the problem, and that's why, what I wanted, in addition to this information... And that's why, what I wanted, in addition to this information, what are our property maintenance codes, the statutes around proper fencing, where we have additional perspective, additional means to enforce the quarantine, protect people like the Domenics and others that are fearful of a dog getting out of the yard, which it did, not once, but twice, before this happened. And that's, so we've got several areas that we can obviously improve upon. But that, that is, when I, when I made the motion, I wanted the additional information relative to property maintenance, fencing, all of, all of the relative statutes that would apply to securing, successfully securing an animal within the home, or on the premises.
And to my knowledge, I may be wrong, but I don't believe there's anything in the fencing, property maintenance ordinances that would, that corresponds with the animal ordinances.
I'm not saying that it necessarily corresponds, but it would work in concert with-
Correct.
Those ordinances. You can't tell somebody to quarantine an animal that is acting viciously on their property if they're unable to quarantine the animal acting vicious on their property without proper fencing, without a gate, without the proper means to control the animal.
Oh, no, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with that.
They are inherently related.
Oh, yes, they are. And I do, I do have the definition, or the quarantine procedure from Animal Control, and that is one of the things that, that we do believe should be spelled out in the ordinance, that quarantining means this. And technically, under the quarantine, the dog should not just be let out loose in a backyard where it could get free. I mean, it's to be taken out on a leash by the owner to go to the bathroom and then put back in the house.
Of course. Alright, and I'm gonna wrap up, because I, we have, we have much work to do. And I don't want to belabor this ad nauseam. This is an important point to make, and I want to make sure that it's, it's read into the record. "A dog determined to be a vicious dog may be destroyed when the court finds that the release of the dog would create a significant threat to the public health, safety, and welfare." So if we do have that capability today, the court has to make that order.
Correct, and there is a court action pending with respect to this incident.
Alright, and so the judge will have the option to have ordered the dog to be euthanized, order it to be returned to the home. What are the, are there any other options?
Right now, the way the ordinance is written, there is the designation of a potentially dangerous dog. And the definition of that is, I believe, two or more occasions within a 36-month period, or something like that. Don't quote me on that. And then there's the vicious dog, which has attacked or bitten a domestic animal or a person. I'm sorry, I got sidetracked.
Mr. President.
Can you ask your question again?
So what I'm, what I'm looking for are-
Oh, I'm sorry, returning to the owner, yes.
Yes, the options by the court.
If, if it's declared potentially dangerous or vicious, and really, the requirements are very similar. If the dog is not euthanized, it would be returned home. It has to be kept in, in a secure enclosure, fencing that it cannot get out, that no one can get in or trespass. It also has to be, well, I think it says tethered, so that it can't be within four feet of a fence of the neighboring properties. That it has to be walked by a grown adult on a less than six-foot leash with a muzzle. There is an additional fee to be paid to the clerk's office with a dangerous dog designation.
Okay.
On its license.
Under the current case, you said that there's a court case pending?
There is.
Alright, what is, and you are representing the Domenics, or the City Attorney's Office is representing the Domenics in this case, is that correct?
Well, we're representing the city, but yes.
You're representing the city, but-
On behalf of the incident that happened to the Domenics dog, yes.
Okay. What action is the City of Warren, on behalf of your office, what are you seeking in this case? What action?
I am not personally handling it. I do know a petition has been filed. What relief was requested, I, I don't know whether that was euthanasia, I have no idea.
Okay.
So I can't really comment on that.
Through the, through the chair to Mr. Vincent, are you aware, I would expect you to be fully aware of what action the city is petitioning on this, in this particular case?
I mean, I can say, I, I'm sure it was a joint, a request for any relief that the court has the authority to, to order, being either-
I don't want to put you on the spot, if you don't know.
Either euthanasia, or the designation of a dangerous dog, or vicious dog. I'm sure it was all of the above encompassed.
I want to center in here on what we're seeking, because time is of the essence, and we need to ensure that the proper action is followed.
Mr. Vincent?
Michael's seeking the designation that it is in fact a vicious dog. And once that's achieved, then the next step would be up to the court to determine which way.
So the petition is seeking a, it to be, the animal to be designated as a vicious dog. Now what, and what path does that pay for us?
What path?
What, what options does that, if a dog is determined, designated by the court to be vicious, what actions are available?
Well, the ultimate, in this case, we could euthanize the animal. Considering it killed one dog, and I understand there was a prior incident, so it has a history of attacking dogs, other dogs, smaller dogs.
So the request for relief is the designation and the action to euthanize the animal?
That's correct. Now that's, it's a contested hearing.
I understand.
Right, okay.
So, I'll, I'll say it again, the city failed the Domenics. The city failed to protect the Domenics. We have obviously a lot of work to do on this. We're not going to solve it tonight. But we are, we are at the judge's mercy to ensure that the Domenics and others like her, you heard their 14-year-old daughter speak. No one should have to feel that way. No one should have to experience what she experienced. We failed her. The city failed the Domenics. I can't say that enough. We have the responsibility to protect our residents and anybody that traverses our city from any dangerous animals. So we have to get this done. This is not something that can sit on the back burner. I want every available resource to work on bringing all of those relative pieces that I talked about that can help us secure the animals, ensure that we are securing the animals, working through all of the legalities to ensure that there's a clear path that when Ms. Domenic called me for the first time, didn't know where she needed to go, what she needed to do. There's, we shouldn't have to rely on our residents to know what the, the ordinance are. We should be shepherding them through that process. And the police guiding them through every step of the way, and ensuring that those rules are followed. I am very happy to see at least that there were, that we have the ordinances on the books that were enforced to the extent that they were. Now we have to wait for the court. And now it is our turn to do more, and to close any gaps that we have.
Mr. President.
Are you finished?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Papadaria?
Yes, I have a few questions. I was an assistant city attorney for 28 years. Each one of those years, I was in the courtroom. We have four judges. I saw many dogs put down, Mary Michaels herself has had five or six dogs killed. We have the appropriate laws, but simply we have to follow the law, simple as that. Now, once, if this person is found guilty, then it will be up to the judge to sentence them. I believe even the owners can go to jail for up to 90 days. I could be wrong on that, but I know the dog can be put down. It's been done many times in the past, but we have to follow the rule of law. Simply, we have to prove our case, and from what these people are saying, it sounds like a pretty good case. But we have to, we are not, you know, judge, jury, and prosecutor. We are the prosecutor. Then it's up to the judge to sentence. And I can tell you, I know each one of those judges very well, and they will sentence appropriately. So to say that we let people down, I'm not sure if that's just playing politics with this, or what. But I've talked, I've talked to these people on the phone.
Don't you dare.
I've talked, you love to play politics.
Don't you dare, not-
You love to play politics.
Stick to the issue.
You stick to the issue. Stop the politicking. Now look at, I've talked to them on the phone, I've explained the law to them. It's a simple model, file a police report, let the, let the prosecutor do their job, let the police do their job, and you'll be gone in 90 days too, Mr. Lafferty.
Politics.
Thank you, Mr. Pappandrea. Mr. Vincent?
Mr. President.
Mr. Vincent, real quick, so you said that the, the city attorney working on this case asked in, to have the dog put down?
Not yet, no.
No.
We're trying to get the designation of a vicious dog.
So it's a two-step process, you get the designation first, and then, but based on the, what we've learned, and what we've heard in conversation with the resident and with some of the neighbors, is that this is a dangerous dog, and it's happened several times. So, well, as Mr. Papandrea said, it is your jurisdiction now to prosecute this. We hope that you do so to the full extent, to protect the residents.
We will.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Mr. Watts and Mr. Kaczynski.
Based on what I heard tonight, I have a couple of questions now, too. This particular case, and I know there's other cases in the city, but this particular dog has been on the loose on numerous occasions. Wouldn't that trigger both the Police Department to be out there writing some kind of violation, and property maintenance checking to see if they had the proper fencing, secure environment for this, for this dog?
Not necessarily. The police would be on duty if the dog was loose. But the particular officers on patrol may not know the dog's history. That would be Animal Control.
Okay, so, and I hear you on that. So the other thing that I heard was, you needed probable cause and a warrant to get the dog. Dog has already bit somebody else, been out numerous times, mauled another dog now. Wouldn't that have been probable cause to get a warrant immediately and seize that dog? And I'm a, I'm a dog lover, so I'm, you know, I mean, I wouldn't want anybody taking my dog, but in this particular case, this dog has a history.
I didn't say that. I mean, that would be up to a judge, but I-
But shouldn't, shouldn't our detectives or our animal control said, hey, we got a problem here, we need to seek a warrant and go get this dog, instead of leaving it there? That's my problem.
Excuse me. I can't, I honestly, I wish, I wish I could. I can't speak to, to why
Okay.
People made judgments that they did on the scene. I can't put myself in someone else's shoes. I don't know.
Okay, I mean, because this only adds to the other things I've said tonight. I'm seeing many things going on across the city where things aren't being taken care of, and residents are really fed up with it. So you have to see our frustration. We're elected to do a job, and these people call us. They don't call you guys, they call us. So here we are, dealing with this. This is not, this is not acceptable. I don't care what department's involved in it. This is not acceptable in any means, so, thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Kaczynski?
I just had three questions. My first question, is, as a result of what happened, the dog that committed the attack, do they, does the Animal Control take him into a veterinarian for a medical exam to determine whether they had rabies or any other medical situation that may have explained the dog's behavior, why it did this, or why it acted in this manner? Is it, I mean, is the dog given a medical exam before it's returned back to the owner after the attack happened?
No.
Okay, would you think that would be a prudent measure that we could have in our ordinance?
Speaking with Animal Control, and again, I'm not an animal expert, but the 14-day quarantine period is required whether or not the owners have proof of a rabies vaccination. And-
Are we trusting that documentation to be authentic?
They, and I mean, I can, I can read this to you, but, and I don't know the reason behind it, but important, do not, under any circumstances, before the 10-day quarantine, and here, I'm wrong, it's 10 days, kill the dog or animal, dispose of it in any manner, remove the animal from the property before first notifying Animal Control, or having him observe the animal. No, I mean, I think they honestly, to do the rabies, they honestly have to cut the head off and send, send the head to Lansing. You can't, I mean, that's the only way to test for that.
Okay, um, my next question is, I under, so you're going to prosecute this case on behalf of the city? Or is the city going after financial damages as well for the financial damages that may have been incurred by the residents?
Restitution would be part of any criminal proceeding. I mean, there's also civil remedies available.
I would imagine that maybe short-term, maybe therapy for mental health, or getting over this traumatic situation might be in order, and it might cost some money to do so, so I mean, I think financial damages would be needed and necessary to provide for that? Especially this was a traumatic experience for the residents. Would you agree?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It's, I mean, it's a horrific, it's a horrific-
Some level of counseling, perhaps?
And that would be up to the judge to order, absolutely, but restitution is customary to request.
Okay, and this next question, I've asked this before on this item, when it was previously tabled. This might be a question for the Police Department, it may not be for you, but I know our city is certified. Right now, we've got the accreditation. Do they have an accreditation or a certification from the trainings provided by the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals? They have a humane law enforcement program, a certification for animal control officers. Do we currently have this certification for our officers in the City of Warren?
I-
I would have to research that.
Okay, maybe that's a question for the Police Department captains, we have two of them, I believe, here. Okay, thank you.
Any additional, Mr. Lafferty?
Unless council doesn't have anything.
No. Most received and filed?
No, I'm going to move that we receive and file the, the report, and request a committee of the whole to be held on this no later than June 20th. Let's give us a target date for city attorneys to work on, and report back no later than that date. That way we have preliminary information by the 13th, our next council meeting, and then 20th will be a committee of the whole.
Support.
May I make a comment?
Please.
Again, I, I would encourage anyone who has an interest in this matter to attend the court hearings and address the judge, because he's ultimately the one making the decision.
Understood.
Okay.
All in favor to table this, or receive and file and send this to a committee of the whole?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Do you have a date for the committee of the whole yet?
Before June 20th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'll be out of town June 20th, but-
We're doing before June 20th.
Okay.
Next item? 13C.
Item 13C. Let me get back to my notes. 13C is update from legal counsel.
Mr. Schroeder?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, we received a published opinion from the Michigan Court of Appeals in the matter involving Council President Green. There was a coup d'etat attempt in 2022 that has been thoroughly reviewed by the courts to remove Council President Green from his position under the section related to term limits, excuse me, and the court ruled in favor of the city council in the interpretation that the council had of the city charter, which essentially says you can serve partial terms, and those partial terms don't count toward the term limit, which was similar to the way we set up term limits in the State House of Representatives and for the governor. If you serve at the state level less than half of the term, it doesn't count as a full term. In this particular case, Council President Green had served one year of a partial term and then was elected to the State House of Representatives, resigned his position and came back and was allowed on the ballot. And the language in the charter says that you cannot serve in the position for more than the greater of three complete terms or 12 years in that particular position. And this was the language that the council received last November when this controversy arose, and both the Circuit Court and the Court of Appeals agreed with our interpretation of that. And in each particular case, our approach has been very simple with the court as it is with this council, which is to say, you read the plain language of the charter or the ordinance that is in dispute. So we took the plain language of the charter. We read every word. You give meaning to every single word in the charter, and then you interpret that. You don't skip over words. You don't eliminate phrases to come to the conclusion that you want. There can always be a lot of magical thinking when you're reading a law to try to get to the conclusion that you want to get to. What the courts like to see is that you read every single word, you give the plain ordinary meaning to every word and interpret that. And that's how we prevailed on behalf of the council in this case. It is the fourth published opinion in the last three years where the city council has prevailed on disputes over the city charter, and we have used this approach in every single case. And I'm proud to say we've received a unanimous decision in every one of these cases, and they're all published. The court has an option to publish an opinion or not publish an opinion. When an opinion is published, it is something that is binding on all 82 circuit courts in Michigan, 83. How many counties do we have? 83. So all 83 circuit courts in Michigan, this is binding law. So if there's something similar, they have to follow this. So we're very proud of that. And again, this was a situation that could have easily been avoided if we just sat down and read the charter and interpreted it. And the city council did not cause this, this litigation. In addition, today, we were informed that the mayor is abandoning his appeal to the Supreme Court in the budget dispute. As you may recall, the budget dispute was over the fact that the city council's legislative body passes a budget, and then the budget has to be complied with by the mayor and in the administration. And in budget year 2021, they decided they didn't have to follow the budget. And again, the Circuit Court and Court of Appeals ruled in our favor. There was a pending Supreme Court application where the mayor was asking for the Supreme Court to review this case. They abandoned that today. After talking to Council President Green and Council Secretary Moore, we of course agreed to that. It would end the litigation and essentially end the dispute and let stand the Court of Appeals decision. Moving forward, we want to avoid any further litigation matters, but I did talk to the attorney for the mayor and the city clerk today because we have a very serious issue where the city council is being completely obstructed on a number of ordinances that the council passed. Again, the council is the legislative body of the city. Your purpose is to pass laws, pass ordinances, pass legislation. We have seven or eight ordinances now that you have passed as a body that are being obstructed because they haven't been published. So when any law is passed, it has to be published in order for it to be effective. For example, at the state level, our state house and senate passes a law, the governor signs it, it goes into the Michigan compiled laws, but it has to be published by the Secretary of State before it's effective. If it's not published, it's not effective. And so we have ordinances that have made it through the process, they've been approved, and essentially they're sitting there. One of them is the Veterans Advisory Memorial Commission, which is a commission that would help coordinate veteran services in the community, be a resource for veterans, and also look over the Veterans Memorial Park, and the council appropriated money for that. So the Veterans Advisory Memorial Commission had the votes, it passed. It doesn't exist because it's not been published. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission is an example. We have the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, which is any project over $50,000 is going to require a responsible contractor. And there's also very pro-labor, pro-union provisions in that ordinance. And we received a letter from the city attorney's office saying that, no, you, you can't do this. And we researched it and we said, yes, you can. The Open Government Ordinance requiring free access to minutes of all the meetings. The ordinance dedicating EMS transport revenue to the fire department. The ordinance limiting advertisements at public expense and to disclose to the public when an advertisement is paid for by tax dollars. A simple disclosure requirement for transparency. We also have a pending tree ordinance coming and a few others. So again, I am trying very hard to see if we can negotiate a publication of these ordinances so we can stay out of court. But if we don't go to court, that means that all of these, all this hard work that the council's done, all these laws that are passed to benefit the public will not take effect. So I will keep you apprised. I'm hopeful we can, we can get there. And otherwise, you know, do we have to wait for the next administration? I don't know. But I, I believe very strongly, very strongly that a court will order these ordinances to be published so they take effect. This is almost like a no-brainer legal argument to say that these things must be published. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Watts.
If I may, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Schroder.
Yep.
Do we have any pending cases still?
There is one open case in the Circuit Court. I think we'll probably go into closed session soon to discuss the particulars of what's remaining on that.
Yeah, it's, it's a shame because we've won everything. I mean, the things that we did when were just so trivial that it didn't make any difference. But, you know, we've won everything that, that we're up here for, and I appreciate the hard work that, that's getting done. It's, it's kind of sad that he's withholding the ordinance for the EMS transport money. He's the one that bragged at last meeting, at his last state of the city address that there was 35 million in the fund that they've never spent. And here we are with fire halls falling down, understaffing, massive overtime, and he's withholding that, that money from the fire department, so, but that's okay. Thank you.
Any additional? Thank you, Mr. Schroder. Next item?
Next item, item 14, correspondence from the mayor. Item A, tabled May 9th, 2023, requested the legal department for a transfer of funds between line items in the amount of $20,700 and an additional appropriation of funds in the amount of $12,000 in order to provide sufficient funds in several accounts for the balance of the fiscal year, including contractual obligations and an upgrade to a cloud-based document management system. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, five votes needed. Motion to remove from the table?
Support.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Rogan C to remove from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Items off the table.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Support. Motion by Lafferty, support by Papandrea. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lafferty.
Thank you. And this really is both, both items A and B as they're, as they're tied together. Thank you for, for sending the contract over, and good evening, Mr. Schuman. Thank you for, for being here as well. You have a statement of work for the migration of the data from our on-premise servers to the cloud servers for this particular application. The one item, do we have a master agreement with this company that defines terms and conditions? I'm, I'm asking you, Mr., Mr. Vincent.
I'm not aware of a master agreement because we were contracting with them when I arrived. It's been since 2005, and I think it's probably just a series, I don't want to guess. I'll have to research it.
Okay. I have, I have one concern about this. The statement of work is fine because it's, it defines all of the actions necessary to transition our legal data from the city of Warren to the custody of another entity. But there are no protections within this document that say we retain ownership of that data. And I'm having shades of QuadTran here, and we just went through with the district court, that there are no protections. And typically, they would not be in a statement of work. The statement of work would reference the master agreement where those terms will be laid out. So if that doesn't exist, I'm hesitant to allow this to go through because we're just going to be creating another potential issue at some point in the future should we want to get our data back, move it to a competitor. They have, if we don't reserve the right to our own data, the ownership of our own data, they have absolutely no right to give it back to us.
Okay. I'll research that.
The other item that I have that's in contention is you're asking for an upgrade for a five-year period, not to exceed $60,000. The statement of work does have a subscription, but its period is only until April 19th of
There will be a series of renewals.
Okay. So we're, we're just, we're assuming that there will be an automatic renewal?
No, not necessarily automatic. The parties have to agree.
Okay. Because that's, that's also not defined here. So terms and conditions of the renewal and terms and conditions of our right to exit the contract without cause.
Is that a question?
No, it's, it's more of a statement. He's taking, taking notes on that. So with that, I would like to table this item. Can you have this back to us in two weeks?
Yes, I can.
Okay. If you can have this back to us in two weeks with those questions and, and those terms and conditions, we can protect our data and move it over to the custody of M-Files.
Mr. President.
Mr. Papandrea.
Is there any problem with tabling this for two weeks?
I think that's what Mr. Lafferty is intending to do.
I know, but I want to find out if there's going to be a problem caused by tabling this for two weeks.
I do anticipate it. We've already passed the contract expiration date, and they're allowing us to continue.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Kaczynski.
I just had one question. I asked this before when it got tabled before. Can you explain the level of security that would be provided for the cloud-based document management system? Is this going to be secured?
Yes, there's a document that was included that outlines all the security measures this company is willing, is, is going to take. There's a document that's included.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. So there's a document that should have been included with the contract that details all the security measures the company has, has taken to protect our data.
I understand. I'm a little bit out of my element here, so that's why I was trying to understand from you directly.
One of the main things is that our data will be housed within the United States, not outside anywhere.
Okay.
There'll be backups made daily, hourly, weekly, monthly. And the data itself where it resides, it complies with all the industry standards. That's just a simple way to put it, but if you want a more detailed, detailed understanding of it, there's that document that you can refer to.
Okay. But you're comfortable with the level of security that will be provided?
Like, we've been dealing with this company probably 15-plus years, and they're pretty credible, and other municipalities have been using them as well. So it's just, we're just moving our data from on-prem to the cloud.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lafferty.
Just to add to that, Mr. Kaczynski, that I looked into this. The company has an exceptional reputation. The kind of data they protect, the kind of data they store and process is, requires the utmost security. And Mr. Schuman has found a very reliable vendor to do that for us. Motion to table, date certain?
Support.
June 13th, 2023.
Motion to table by Lafferty, support by Watts, to table to June 13th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you both.
Thank you.
So we're leaving B on the table?
Yeah, we'll leave item 14B, which is the contract.
Yeah, we're off to C.
Item 14C, tabled May 5th, I'm sorry, May 9th, 2023, requested the wastewater treatment plant to award bid ITBW 0930 to the sole bidder, Rubicon Environmental Services LLC, to furnish and install ceramic diffusers in the amount not to exceed $168,078. Consideration and an adoption of a resolution. Motion to remove from the table?
Support, Rogan C.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Rogan C to remove from the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Items removed from the table. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Support by Rogan C. Mr. Lafferty?
Yes. Through the chair to Mr. Clor. You have ceramic diffusers in your hand, don't you?
I do. That's what a ceramic diffuser is.
That's terribly exciting.
Yeah, so these cost us about $30,000 a year to clean by going to these new EPDMI membrane diffusers. That will stop us having to clean them. No more HCl gas. So we have a contract currently to do it, and I just read what I sent you, and I have a mistake in there, and I apologize. So it's supposed to be furnish install of EPDI membranes and remove ceramic diffusers.
Let the, let the record reflect the correction by Mr. Clor. In our resolution, will be updated accordingly.
Thank you. Do you want me to send it over, or does Mary want to make the adjustment?
No, if you don't mind, send me a copy.
Okay, I'll send it over. No problem. Sorry, I made a mistake. I just read it, and I'm like, I made a mistake. So I apologize.
Okay. That's why we tabled it. You weren't there to fix it. I do have two questions. One is the status of the stack. I don't seem to see it now when I drive by.
It's down. It's gone. It's been completely removed. It's down to the foundation, and they've backfilled. So the contract did a really good job, and it's now really safe for my employees, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. And the, the contracts that were in effect for all of the telecom companies?
Those should be all set, so we should be all set with that. Because there's the new, we have the new tele, the new telephone stack now, so they should be all set.
Okay. That's all been transferred over to the, the new stack?
Correct.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kaczynski.
How many of those are you going to have installed?
Oh, gosh, there's.
Two or three.
They're that expensive?
There's a couple thousand.
Two or three thousand.
Oh, okay. All right.
The, the exact number is in the bid packet. I can, if you want to, I'll look it up, but there's a couple thousand per, per tank.
That's a lot of money for a little frisbee. That's what it looks like.
Any additional? You still have more questions, Mr. Kaczynski, or is that, is that satisfied?
Yeah, this will actually, the great part about this is these have a five-year warranty, and they're actually supposed to last longer than that. It's supposed to last 15 to 20 years, and the money we're saving on the cleaning, they pay for itself after five years. So this is great.
Awesome.
Better process. Any additional? Call the question, Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Ms. Rogan C.
Yes.
Mr. Papandrea?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Green votes yes, item passed 6 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Next item?
Item 14D, requested the fire department to transfer of funds between line items the amount of $372,178, and an additional appropriation of funds in the amount of $1 million in order to provide sufficient funds for the remainder of the fiscal year. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, five votes needed. So moved.
Support Rogancy.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Rogancy. Discussion? Call the question, Mr. Lafferty? Oh, sorry, Mr. Watts?
I have questions on this.
Go ahead.
Through the chair to Mr. McAdams.
Commissioner? Haven't seen you since we put in those smoke detectors.
So...
Good evening again.
Operating supplies, what, what is operating supplies? What, what do you?
Uh, operating supplies is the line item that we use to buy anything that's not depreciable. So that would include janitorial supplies, tire, well, not tires, um, tools.
Okay.
Equipment, anything that's not depreciable.
Alright, overtime. We're at a million dollars. Transferring a million dollars. I thought this program was to take, was taking care of the overtime. I thought we were at full staffing.
Yes.
Why are we spending so much money on overtime?
The goal of the program is to eliminate, uh, the understaffing. Uh, we remain fully staffed for approximately two weeks when retirement started occurring. Um, we've held probably five application periods, um, for personnel, for fully certified personnel, and during that five, during the total of the five, um, application periods, we may have received eight applications.
Okay, so this goes way back to the beginning of the meeting. We had these fully credentialed, over, these fully credentialed firefighters sitting on a waiting list that we could have hired, that would have brought us back to full staffing, and we didn't do that, and we're still dealing with overtime here. This is a problem I have. We could have hired these people and had been fully staffed. Where we're, we're, I don't have a problem with the cadet program, but again, it's not curing the problem, and we could have helped cure the problem. Commissioner?
Hold, excuse me. I'd like to answer the question that you laid. The question was, we have hired every fully certified, um, firefighter, paramedic who has applied to the city of Warren and passed through all of the requirements, every one of them. I can't, I, I can't make them apply for our job. We, we increased the salary, we became the top, in the top three for salary and benefits tri-county-wide. Immediately after that, we got two applicants when we had 21 vacancies. Two. The only way we're going to get out of this problem is to create our own firefighter paramedics, and that's what we're on the verge of doing.
Commissioner, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I'm aware, and I wished HR was here to take some of this off your shoulders, but they don't care. We had firefighters fully credentialed that walked away because we didn't do anything, and we could have hired them. You know that. This is my problem here. We're, we're letting fully credentialed firefighters walk away, and we don't know whether the cadets are all going to pass or not.
No, we don't.
We don't know if they're going to pass their CPAT, we don't know if they're going to pass their psychological, we don't know if we're going to pass their background, we don't know if they're going to pass their national registry for being a paramedic. We don't know. That's a, that's a heck of a risk we're taking when we had people on the list that walked. That's all I'm saying. That may not be your fault, that may be HR's fault, but this has got to stop. You know, I sit here and I watch the police department handling their hiring over there, and they're, they're recruiting pretty doggone good, cause I see why people don't want to be police officers today. I always thought people loved being a firefighter because they get to be the hero, right? You know, so I, I'm just, I'm struggling with this. We could be doing this ourselves. Why is one department not doing it and the next department not doing it? We're incurring a lot of expenses here. Think of all the money we put into this cadet program, and if they don't pass, we're stuck.
If you recall, two fiscal years ago, I spent almost $3 million in overtime. Even with this transfer, it'll be under 2 million. The first four take their national registry exam in the, in about a week to 10 days. The first four just passed the class. They passed their, the, the class and their final examinations to be eligible to take the national registry exams. We're doing everything we can to create. I, I got a resignation letter from a fully certified firefighter, paramedic who's on the department now, who's going to the city of Detroit. He made it through, he's got almost a year of seniority here, and he decided he didn't like it here. I can't stop people from leaving, I can't make people come. The only thing I can do, and I'm competing with everybody, everybody's looking for applicants. Everybody's looking for fully certified firefighter, paramedics. We're creating them, and yes, it's a risk, but otherwise, I would probably be 21, I've got six, I'd probably be at about 50 vacancies had we not created the cadet program, because 21 of them are firefighter basics right now on the department.
Is any of this money going to pay for, um, tuition reimbursement?
Not this money, no.
Okay. Alright, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Commissioner, um, oh, sorry, Mr. Kaczynski, go ahead.
Oh. Thank you. You said, I, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. I don't want to put words in your mouth. You said 50 personnel would be, you would be 50 personnel short right now?
Yes, I would be approximately 50 people short had we not created the fire cadet program, and with the, um, LOA with the firefighters' union, it allows for 21 firefighter basics to work in the department. So those 21 wouldn't be there, and, uh, July 1st, I will have, with the six additional, I will have approximately, well, I'll probably have six vacancies, because right now I've got a hiring list of four fully certified. Um, with the four who take their national registry, it'll allow me to fill seven vacancies, which would make me fully staffed, but then July 1st, uh, with the increase, and thank you, I'll be six short again, and we're, we will be starting in a new hiring list, looking for fully certified.
So let, let me ask you this...
And paramedic, I mean, and cadets.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but, uh, let me ask you this. What, what I'm trying to get to is for this upcoming fiscal year, now that the budget is done, this upcoming fiscal year, to your knowledge right now, how many firefighters do you anticipate losing to retirement, or they've already indicated to you that they would be leaving this year?
Two to three.
Just two to three?
Yes, through the remainder of 2023. I did not anticipate this person going to a job that pays $10,000 less and doesn't have a pension, but for whatever reason, he wants to work for the city of Detroit.
So in addition to the ones that you have going through training right now, you're going to have to have Phil for an additional three that you're going to have coming up for retirement that you know of right now?
I expect, um, I know for certain that one person is retiring. Um, there's always, the expectation is that we have, uh, four to five people retire per year. There are approximately 15 to 18 who can retire tomorrow. But of those who can retire, the only one for certain who must retire, I only know of one who is going to retire in 2023, and rumors of potentially two more.
So in your posi, in your opinion, would you say that we're constantly, constantly playing catch-up with trying to have a fully staffed fire department, given, you know, people leaving for other departments and retirements and that kind of thing? That, I mean, that we will probably never, I mean, well, maybe that's a strong word, that at moments we might have a fully staffed fire department, but, I mean, that could always decrease with a retirement or somebody leaving, so that we'll be short again.
I expect that over the next, uh, six months to a year, um, we should be fully staffed constantly, and we will probably have no more than four vacancies at a time, but I anticipate, uh, with the second cadet class, um, being able to, to bring them along in such a way that it's a two-year process, um, to get them through the three classes, depending upon scheduling, that we'll be able to pretty much match, um, the cadets with the expected vacancies, and then also, hopefully, the overall shortage of firefighter paramedics statewide and nationwide will start to alleviate as more people enter, uh, the field. A, a lot of people are turning away from college and going back into skilled trades, and hopefully, the atmosphere, the distrust and the dislike, um, of uniformed personnel will start to ease, and we can return to a more normal, um, applicant field. When I hired on, I competed with over 700 people for 30 jobs, and, uh, that was the stor, that was the history of this department, and now we do an application period and we get two to four.
Okay, my last question, I promise, is given the, what you want to accomplish here with these, with this overtime here, and the new hiring, and what you anticipate with the people retiring, and you're going to replace those positions, once you have this fully staffed and anticipating those that are going to retire and being able to staff those positions right away, what do you foresee your need for overtime to be in the future here?
Right around, right around a million dollars.
So this is always going to be?
No, with this, this will bring it to about, uh, 1.9. I anticipate, I requested and was approved for a million for, for next fiscal. The current cadet class, they are staggered in six different, um, paramedic classes who complete their training, um, at various times throughout the, um, the rest of this summer, all the way into December, late December.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lafferty?
Just a couple of questions. You mentioned that without the cadet program, that you wouldn't be staffed as well as you are today.
Correct.
Is a cadet able to perform all of the duties of a fully credentialed firefighter?
No, he cannot ride a ALS transport squad.
Please define for me an ALS transport squad.
Advanced Life Supports, parameter, uh, firefighters...
An ambulance?
Yes, but in municipal, we don't call it ambulances.
Okay, well, he's over here talking quints and quads, and, and we always have to ask the same question.
Ambulances are for the, uh, private sector. Squads are for firefighters.
Thank you for the clarification.
Or rescues.
So while you're fully staffed, you still have to have a certain number of credentialed firefighters on staff to do the work?
Yes, of which I have approximately 97.
So then, fully staffed is with an asterisk. You're fully staffed because you have bodies in the roles, but you don't have the roles that can be fulfilled by everybody on the team?
Correct. But I am able to maintain full staffing, I'm able to maintain six squads in service, and July, uh, 1st, when the new fiscal year starts, we'll start the process of requesting the additional personnel, and we will move towards staffing a seven squad.
So that's, that is a large contributor to then the overtime factor that we have?
No, a large contributor to the overtime factor is replacement of personnel, um, like the firefighter basics have 250 hours of internship to complete. In addition, they had 150 hours, give or take, I'm, I don't have it in the top of my head, 150 hours of what we call third rides and clinical rotations at hospitals to complete. When they are gone from the department to do this, I have to replace them with personnel to maintain daily staffing.
Okay.
So it just reduces...
I get, yeah, I get that. I wanted to clarify the, the statement that we're fully staffed when we're truly not. We don't have fully credentialed firefighters in each and every one of our, our roles.
Correct. The, um, when I came here, we passed a, um, we changed the requirements indicating that everyone had to become a firefighter, paramedic. Prior to that, you just had to be, maintain your level of licensure that you had. So we went from, in 2008, from approximately 40, 40 to 50, um, firefighter, paramedics to today approximately 100. I have sufficient, um, paramedics to staff every squad every day. What I don't have is enough to fully rotate, um, between squad, between engines, quints, and squads. The normal process so that everybody gets a day off of the squad.
Alright, understood. That's, that helps clarify. And I've, just as a, a note, I've taken a ride in two of those ALS squads of yours, unfortunately on my back. They're a little bumpy.
I don't recommend it, but the...
I don't either.
The new three have a much better ride. Um, the, if you've seen the new three, the three latest additions to the fleet, they are a little bigger than, um, the previous make and model, and provide a little more comfort.
Okay.
But overall...
I'll take, I'll take your word for it.
Overall, it's not the, it's not an Escalade ride.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any additional? I'll just summarize a bit. So we know that at any time between police and fire, we're going to be down five to 10 people. How, how many positions are you budgeted for?
Uh, right now, 139. July, July 1st, I think it's 145.
And how many are, do we have?
Right now, um, a hundred...
How many vacant, vacant positions? I'll do a shorter number.
I have seven right now.
Okay.
And we're in the process of hiring, uh, four, four to six.
Years ago, overtime was over 3 million.
Yes.
And there is a number. We're always going to have overtime.
Yes.
But there's a point, and it depends on the number of personnel budgeted in the department. We're always going to have overtime, but there is a number that people are working too much overtime, and then the quality, I don't know what that is, I'm assuming you know where that's at, but I would recommend looking at doing what the police department did and bring hiring in-house, because it is different. So my recommendation, but we'll go from there. Any additional? Call the question, Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Rogancy?
Yes.
Mr. Papadrea?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Green votes yes, item passed six to zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 14E, request of the fire department to, for a transfer of funds between line items in the amount of $165,100 to cover contractual obligations associated with the Firefighters Association Local 1383. Consideration and an adoption of a resolution, five votes needed.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Support Lafferty.
Motion by Watts, support for Lafferty. Discussion, Mr. Watts?
So this says cadet wages instruction. Is this tuition reimbursement? Is this tuition reimbursement for the paramedic program?
Yes, the, the fire cadets and the probationary firefighters that we hired, the 21, got scared and self-enrolled in paramedic classes because the contract indicated that they had a total of 24 months to complete the requirements, otherwise they would be terminated. So absent an ability to send our guys to school and women, potentially women, they took it upon themselves to, in self-enrolling class because, for fear of losing their job.
All right, so next question. Is any of this payment going to any cadet that was terminated or left on their own?
No.
We're sure of that? We're not, we're not paying for anybody that quit or got terminated?
Unless I made a mistake, I don't think so.
Okay, those that, those that terminated, that were terminated or quit and left, are they reimbursing the program for what they, they're supposed to be reimbursing for?
Yes, we have sent out the letters to, I believe, two people who left us to pursue, to take a full-time job in another department.
I know.
Or not a full-time, uh, to be sponsored by another agency.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not paying for anybody that quit or was terminated.
Unless I made a mistake, which I don't think so, I went over several times.
Well, before it's paid, I would suggest we find out because that's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
It's going to be a big.
I submitted the list with, as part of the backup, and I don't think there's anybody there.
I, to be honest with you, I read the backup and I don't, I don't see the list.
There was no list with that?
No, no. Yep, just went back through it, there's no list.
Well.
Is there an invoice?
Nope.
Can you send it over to Councilman Watts tomorrow?
Yep, please.
Thank you. Any additional?
Yeah, one, one clarification. Your, this is a request for a transfer of funds, but you just said it was budgeted?
No, I said the, the cadet program, the, I was budgeted for 27 cadets. We hired 21 of the cadets in the full-time positions in the department. Well, not, well, firefighter EMT positions in the department, which reduced the cadet wages from 30 down to 7. Therefore, we had savings in the cadet wages that were available to pay for the reimbursement per the LOA.
So the balance is being moved.
So instead of requesting money from the general fund, we requested an inter, interdepartmental transfer.
Okay.
From cadet wages to instruction.
So you're moving money, money between light items?
Yes.
Okay.
Any additional?
Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Watts?
I got one, one last question if I may, of Mr. Knapp. I don't have internet connection here, obviously. That's never been fixed in the last three and a half years. But Mr. Knapp, can you tell me, was there money budgeted in the last, in this last budget for the cadet program? Because I swear we budgeted nothing.
I can explain it.
It would have been in the, in the previous year, in the present year.
If you recall, the, the department request was for 30. You reduced it to 27 and added three personnel, fully certified firefighter paramedics, and you funded the cadet program at 27 fire cadets. So we budgeted the wages and the necessary stuff for taxes and stuff.
There was a total of $631,000 allocated.
Can you speak to the microphone, please?
The current, the current budget includes $631,000 for cadets.
Okay, did we go over that?
No, we're transferring money from.
To go, okay. All right, fair enough.
Any others? Call the question, Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Rogenczy?
Yes.
Mr. Papadrea?
Yes.
Green votes yes, item passed six to zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Council.
Next item.
Item 14, let's see, F. Request of the police department for an additional appropriation of funds for the Drug Forfeiture Special Revenue Fund Balance in the amount of $47,993 to cover the cost to purchase an additional police vehicle. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, five votes needed.
Our motion?
So I'll support it with discussion.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. Motion by Lafferty, support by Watts. Discussion?
Simple question, why are we only buying one?
Good evening.
Evening, Cap.
So our, generally, we purchase our vehicles. We go through the budgeting process, somewhere between 12 and 18 vehicles a year. We do that once a year. The availability is very difficult. However, what ends up happening is we become short at the end of every fiscal year in vehicles due to accidents, vehicles going out of service for maintenance issues. So this is the first time we're doing this. We had a vehicle involved in an accident, it was totaled. So we're looking to replace the vehicles as they're totaled as opposed to waiting until the end of the year and being short all year, so.
Fair enough.
Any additional? Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Rogenczy?
Yes.
Mr. Papadrea?
Yes.
Green votes yes, item passed six to zero. Next item.
14G, request of the police department to purchase one 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe PPV patrol vehicles through the state of Michigan Cooperative Vehicle Contract Number 071B7700177. Consideration and adoption of a resolution. So moved.
Support. Motion by Lafferty, support by Watts. Discussion? Thank you for supporting that, Mr. Watts. Call the question, Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Rogenczy?
Yes.
Mr. Papadrea?
Yes.
Green votes yes, item passed six to zero. Next item. Thank you, Council.
Item 14H, request of the sanitation division for a transfer of funds between light items in the amount of $46,000 to cover contractual obligations associated with GELC 227, collective bargaining agreement, and to purchase additional recycling carts. Consideration and adoption of a resolution, five votes needed, so moved.
Support Rogenczy.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Rogenczy. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rogenczy?
I just wanted to say, thank you, no questions. The sanitation department does a fantastic job, and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. Sometimes I will get calls at like 7:00 PM for someone saying that their trash wasn't picked up at 4:00, and it is such clockwork that they're thrown off by trash being picked up an hour or two later, which is just quite remarkable that you all run such an amazing department. So just wanted to say thank you.
Yes, they do. Any additional?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lafferty?
I want to know who painted the Jaws teeth on the front end of one of the bumpers of one of the trucks that run through my neighborhood. It's rhetorical.
Do they play the music when it goes?
They don't.
Any additional? Any, any germane questions? Mr. Kaczynski?
I, I have a real question. What is the update on the bar, bar carts? How is that order going? Have we taken care of all the orders that were outstanding for the residents, so on, so forth?
Good evening, Council. In answer to your question, Councilman Kaczynski, we will be ordering those, we'll probably never stop ordering carts. You know, there's always a, a need for them. There's maintenance issues, there's warranty issues. There's people that purchase second and third containers, especially on the brown compost containers. Lot of, a whole lot of people are buying second recycled containers. So we'll probably never, ever stop ordering these.
Are, are the original outstanding orders since the last time you came before us, have those have all been filled?
Yes, those have all been sold. They lasted about four months. 2,500 of them, they lasted about four months. This is the order that we're putting in right now so we get them before the next year budget.
Okay.
So once the budget is, it was this approval, once we're able to order from the next budget, you're looking at eight to 12 weeks. So that won't put us into like August before we get that bunch of containers. So this is just to keep us going so we don't have to wait all the way till August.
So we're trying to get ahead of the game, basically?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any additional? Call the question, Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Rogenczy?
Yes.
Mr. Papadrea?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Green votes yes, item passed six to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Secora. Next item.
14I, consideration and adoption of a resolution approving $23,535,000 in Michigan Transportation Fund Bonds Series 2023 for various roadway rehabilitation projects and sidewalk replacements. So moved with discussion.
Support Rogenczy.
Motion by Lafferty, support by Rogenczy. Discussion, Mr. Lafferty?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Axe.
Ms. Gapsus?
Ms. Gapsus.
Friends?
Mr. Knapp.
Come on down. Good evening, Mr. Axe.
Good evening.
Thank you for staying to the very last item of the agenda. We appreciate you.
That's where we were.
Could you please walk us through this purchase of bonds?
Well, this is a, a project that involves a lot of money for a lot of work, all related to the roads. Even the sidewalks are replacements because they had to get storm drains and things like that underneath redone. It's a, it's a big project, and it's an important project. And we've got a lot of federal money that goes in as well.
A lot of match.
So this is our share.
Yeah.
That's what's going on.
So this is a match. What, what exactly are we matching from the federal government? Ms. Gapsus?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So any of the projects that are listed in the resolution, the ones that say tip next to it, that's our 20% share, and the rest, 80% is federally funded. But some of these projects that don't say tip next to it is, we're funding the whole thing, the whole entire amount.
Okay. And the, the amounts that are listed on page two don't add up to that, that total?
Which total, the 23?
The 23.
The 23 million? Well, that, are you looking, I don't know if you're looking on the same chart as I am, but there's also contingency and insurance costs attached.
Okay.
Is that, is that a spreadsheet? We have just a verbal.
I, is, was this attached to it?
We just have a description of the road, cross, side streets and whatnot, and.
Yeah, it's.
We don't have a breakdown that shows.
Yeah, I have a chart here that also shows.
We don't have that.
We have a contingency in there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, we have a, a narrative explaining each project.
Right.
Okay, so the rest of the, the funds are accounted for already. There's, there's nothing that, you're looking at additional projects on top of that?
No.
So, okay, so that, all of the money is accounted for?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the, the debt retirement service on this? What's the, the end date?
Hey, good evening, Stephen Burke with MFCI. So these are 20-year, 20-year bonds. The final debt service will be in 2043. And our estimated interest rate on these is 3.84%. Again, done through the Michigan Transportation Fund, which gives the city a one-notch bump on your credit rating given the state's credit rating for these type issues. So the rating agencies will give a one-notch increase because these are first paid from revenues from Michigan Transportation Fund.
How many bonds do we have out currently for transportation funds? Do we have that number?
61, roughly 61.6 million, including this issue. I, I don't have it without this issue. So that, that number minus 23 million. So the existing debt service is approximately, in, in 2023, is roughly 3.3 million on outstanding Michigan Transportation Fund bonds. The city is able to service up to 50% of your Michigan Transportation Fund revenue. So in 2023, the budgeted amount was 17.2 million. So there's approximately $3.7 million of debt service annually available to the city through the MTF program.
Okay, we can service up to 50%. What is that, what is our current bond now put us at?
With the current bond, we would be at about 4.9 million.
Okay.
So we're still at roughly three and a half times coverage.
3.5 times coverage. All right. No doubt that you were going to be able to answer my questions. All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Real quick, between now and the expiration of this bond series, is there the opportunity for us to refinance it? Will that occur with?
Yes, correct. So we have been.
As rates go up and rates go down?
Correct. So a, traditional market right now is a 10-year call. And so the, the city has, as we've done many times, come before you to, to refinance bonds as, as interest rates allow, so.
As we can, let's do that.
And, and 10 years, we'll look to refinance these if, if rates allow.
Ms. Gapsus, I have one little general question. I know we always talk about that fun pager map.
Yes.
And, but just in general, there, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're rated one through five.
One through 10.
One through 10. So we have, so 10 being the worst?
No, one being.
One being the worst, thank you. And how many are a one? And then what I'm getting at is, we're, we're fixing all the ones that are the worst. And ones that are rated two and three are becoming one. Are we keeping up with that pace? Are we repairing roads as fast as needed to?
Trying.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying you're not. What I'm saying is that the way that we're doing it isn't adequately keeping pace. And if it's not, what can we do? That, that's all, I just want to get that out there. So if there's something we can do to keep pace, we'd be interested in hearing that. Not now, it's just, I want to get that thought out when you're up here. So at some point in the future.
These roads were all constructed roughly around the same time era, so they're all kind of falling apart at the same time, same thing with our water mains. I mean, I, I know that there's been talk of perhaps the millage fund going out further 10 years and then bonding a lot of money ahead of time for that. That would be a, a good situation because then we can take care of all the ones and twos all at once. Right now, I have 26 miles of twos.
Yep.
And 100 more, 100 miles of threes. We have 400 miles total of roads.
That's exactly what I'm getting at, is how, how can we do this better? But also then we, we come up against the wall of, like we have right now, we can't have all the roads in our construction at once.
We can't do what?
We want to fix the roads, but we can't have them all in our construction at once.
No.
That's not fun. I mean, I, I mean, Mr. Kaczynski had difficulty finding, getting his way here today just because of all the traffic, so. But if there's, if there is a pathway, we'd love to hear it.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Ms. Gapsus, real quick, I know we talked earlier about the sidewalk situation. What would you rate those sidewalks when you guys, according to that map? What would you rate those sidewalks over there in the condo community when you went over there and did that as courtesy?
I didn't do the evaluation. I can ask my engineer.
Okay.
Joe that did the evaluation.
Okay.
I know there's a lot worse sidewalks than that, but they are trip hazards.
Yeah. Okay. Is, is any of that, to your knowledge, caused by trees or roots or anything like that? Or is that just from overtime decay?
Most likely trees, roots.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's it.
I do have one more. Fraser Road, as you travel east towards Mount.
Most likely trees, roots.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's it.
I do have one more. Fraser Road, as you travel east towards mound, and then you take a right and you're on that little service drive before you get to mound.
Then what service drive?
Whose road is that?
Yeah, that's really bad.
It is.
Well, I know when there, there's talks of when they do 8 to, 8 to 11 at mound, that they'll include all the service drives too. There's talks on it, I believe it's county that.
I was using that to get past not having to go on mound north of 696 with all that construction, but wow.
Yeah.
That road's terrible.
I believe that one is counties.
We'll have to call them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lafferty?
I, I happened to have a discussion the last time Innovate Mound gave their presentation. Nate Ford knows exactly what I'm going to ask him every single time he comes here.
Okay.
So the, those, not only that particular stretch of the service drive, but the entrance ramp off of mound to 11 mile, the one coming off both on the north and south sides, are part of a federal project, another federal project.
Okay.
So it's going to be, as I understand it, separate from Innovate Mound Phase 2, the 11 to 8 mile project, they're asking for another pot of money to replace just those, those streets, or those roads.
So it's going to be a separate project?
Separate, as I understand it, a separate project, separate entity, but yes, those are county.
Yeah. Any additional? Call the question, Mr. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Rogenczy?
Yes.
Mr. Papadrea?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Green votes yes, item passed 6 to 0. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.